Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to move a few things around this morning at the request of some of the presenters, and so I would ask that we go into the Board of Commissioners first. Roque, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Duda, Mr. Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Rogers, Madam Chair. Here. And the first item will be our presentation and discussion by our Election Commissioner, Brian Cruz pertaining to LB 163. This is under our Human Resources Committee. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning. Thank you for having me this morning. I think you all got distributed electronically one, but does anybody need an actual copy?
You can pass it around.
Sure. I know. Yes, that's what I said. I'm gonna have a large viewing audience. I don't know if that's good or bad.
That's good.
Okay, that's good. I'll give you just a moment. Are you ready for me to go ahead and begin?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, first, I'd just like to thank you for inviting me to come down here. The bill is Legislative Bill 163, and essentially what it is, is for voting centers, early voting centers for elections. Our office was asked to do a fiscal analysis of it, I think from the state through the county and then down to me. I know the other two big counties, Lancaster County and Sarpy County, were both asked as well, and we all came up with pretty much the same numbers. Sarpy's a little less because they're smaller, but Lancaster's pretty much right on par with what we are here. But I'll just do this real brief, and then I can take any questions. Basically, we have the breakdown.
Brian, just for the purpose of excellence, could you tell us what LB 163 is about for the audience that's sitting here today?
Sure. So basically, LB 163, I have the bill here, would require, I believe it's counties of more than 100,000, to have at least three with 100,000 inhabitants, at least three locations in the county at which registered voters of the county may vote early. And that would be open 30 days prior to the election through 5:00 PM on Saturday preceding the election, and it states the hours would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and at least eight hours on Saturday. So that's essentially what the bill is. The fiscal note that we came up with, essentially, you're, well, you are, you're opening two more offices, is what you're doing. So staffing, finding space, you know, equipment, et cetera. So it's about $165,000 per location. Now, about 75%, 75 to 80% of that cost would be reoccurring each election, not even annually, but each election. So for a primary and a general. You do have some startup costs, but they're somewhat minimal. Now, beyond the cost of some of our thoughts or concerns, if you flip to the second page of my letter, actually, is the voting locations around the city from election to election. You know, we strive our very best not to move voting locations to eliminate voter confusion. And when we do that, we make a big effort to get out in the public early on and explain where those are. We're moving a polling place in North Omaha back to Girls Inc. from Holy Name Catholic Church this election because they were under construction. They, Girls Inc. has been a long time polling place. They wanted to go back. We're moving back. We got community input from that. Was it Empowerment Network last week? So we really try and get out and get those out early on and get to the community so there's no confusion. So our concern is, if you'd have to lease space, would you be able to find the same location even from a primary to a general election? And so does that cause voter confusion? If, say, if voters went to, whatever, 60th and Ames to the vote center last time, and now you have to move it to 42nd and Fort, or from A to B each time, how do you get that information out there, especially between elections and furthermore, people showing up at the wrong place, and we just believe that that can cause some confusion? The other thing is, where do you put these? Our office can be one location, but it's a minimum of two others, and if we're gonna do it probably realistically in Douglas County, you're gonna want more than that. I mean, if you want to be realistic about this. Lincoln tried to do this 10 years ago, and they tried libraries, and then the libraries got in an argument because they didn't use the downtown library, they only used branch libraries. They tried to do other locations, and Dave Shively finally threw his hands up because the Democrats got mad at the Republicans, the Republicans got mad at the Democrats. It became a huge partisan issue, and so they never went through with it. You know, if we do two besides our site, you know, I suppose you can have one down here, and if you have one, say, out at Best Johnson at Elkhorn, but is that fair to people to live near the Mormon Bridge or down in Rolles? I mean, you know, it's just, two locations probably realistically are not gonna satisfy this, so then your fiscal note increases. So that's kind of my thoughts on this. I'm more than happy to take questions or try and answer questions if you have any. I think you've all seen it. I just.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. The figures you gave us, Mr. Cruz, of $330,000 for two off-site, that's per an election? I mean, if we have a primary and a general in the same year, as you always do when you have elections, will it be double that for one year?
Well, it wouldn't quite be double, but it'd be...
But this is for one election, not one year?
Right, because you're, like, your ballot on demand and your, you know, your hard equipment like desk and ballot on demand, which would print the ballots, that's a one-time fee. But those figures are only about 25% of that. Your biggest figure is staffing. I mean, your biggest cost is staffing.
But it's gonna be our total, the actual cost to Douglas County for an election year is gonna be more like $600,000.
It could be in a presidential year, yes. Because the way I understand this, this is an unfunded mandate from the state of Nebraska. The way I understand it, there is no fiscal note attached to this in Lincoln. And I guess, I probably shouldn't speculate, or I'm not here to speculate, but we all read the paper every day, and there's anywhere from a $900 million to a billion-dollar shortfall, it appears. And the Rainy Day Fund only has about $650 million in it. So I would guess, since there's not a fiscal note to this, they may have a hard time getting the money to do it, but you never want to second-guess the legislature.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. Brian, regarding locations, have you talked to the city of Omaha perhaps about the police substations?
You know, we haven't. Now, someone had suggested the libraries. Now, there's a couple thoughts on that. You know, we're a county office, and they would be city, which doesn't mean that we can't work together because we do all the time. You know, the libraries may not have the same hours as we do. Police stations, you know...
Is it a security issue possibly?
Yeah, right. And that's the other thing. If you don't lease space where you can lock the building up at night and have an alarm on it or something, you have all this equipment sitting there that's unsecure, you know?
Well, we, of course, could use this building, we could use the West Omaha campus, and we could use the 42nd Street campus.
Yeah, I mean, there are possibilities. But I think one of the, not overriding, but one of the big issues is where do you put them? And I'll be honest with you, I don't want to be the one to choose where they go. I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you. Because, I mean, I want to be involved in it, but there'd need to be a bipartisan committee or something of that nature, you know, to determine them. Because if you only have two besides my office, you know, Lancaster's got about 180,000 less registered voters than we do currently, and I mean, Lincoln's smaller than us, and, you know, they had a big problem. The other thing to consider is, we're just talking about putting them in the city of Omaha. Is that fair to the people in Valley? Is that fair to the people in Waterloo? Why aren't they afforded vote centers? I mean, you know...
Very good. Although it wouldn't make, right now, they only have one option, and if we expand it to West Omaha and downtown, that increases the capacity so the lines are not as long, and it's sometimes better to start small and then expand.
I don't necessarily disagree with that. Now, I will say, I'm not sure where this bill was kind of born out of, because we heard in the last presidential election, we have 10 drop boxes around the city. We have purchased new equipment to make by-mail voting extremely easy. As long as it's a two-page ballot or less, voters can fold their ballot and send it back in an envelope with single first-class postage stamp on it. The 10 boxes are scattered throughout the county. We feel that it's pretty darn easy currently to request a ballot. You can request it by faxing, by scanning, by emailing, by even taking a picture of the card and sending it to us from your smartphone, you know, and then voting and getting that ballot returned. We, from our office, actually received very, very few complaints about not having access to a ballot in the last election. In fact, we heard other comments. The comment we heard the most was the new drive-up Dropbox that we installed, and that re, 50% of our ballots are returned by Dropbox, and of that 50%, 50% were returned at the new drive-up Dropbox. And we heard so many comments that people like the number of drop boxes we have and like the drive-up Dropbox. And I'll tell you, the drop boxes are relatively inexpensive. They're less than $1,000 to purchase and install. So, you know, that's relatively inexpensive.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, Brian. I, as you know, we've talked before, I used to be Election Commissioner 160 years ago or so, but...
I've never seen you.
That's right. We had a permanent site at the West Roads that we operated, and of course, then I used the Urban League office on North 24th as a voter registration site. But I think in light of the financial problems of not only the county, but the city and the state, that this is something that needs to be put on the black burner, as much as I'm in favor of making it more convenient for people to vote, I think this is not a time for more spending. So I intend to go down and tell them that, that we just can't afford it. So, and I think people will get, they'll figure out a way to vote.
Right.
So that's how I feel. Because, you know, I mean, look at the room we're here. These people, folks are here because something's happened to them about taxes, and I don't think they're in any mood. They'll vote. They'll find a way. I have a feeling they all voted before, too.
Yeah. You know, and I would just encourage any of the board members or any of the citizens here, if you have questions or concerns about the ability to vote in any way, or you have suggestions for us, how to make it easier, please let us know. We're here to serve the voters of Douglas County, and so we would encourage any feedback at all.
Thanks for bringing this to the board.
Thank you for asking me.
Commissioner Morgan?
Brian, you do a very nice job, and appreciate you coming here today.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, have you talked to the state senator that introduced this proposal?
I have not talked to him, but I have talked to his legislative assistant when it was first introduced, and that's probably been three weeks ago. And I have also talked to a couple other members of the Government Committee. I've talked to Senator Maranti on the Government Committee and another legislative aide, but I have not talked to Senator Vargas directly, but I have talked to his office.
Okay, maybe there's a time on a weekend when he's back that, and Commissioner Boyle, who was the Election Commissioner, you know, we could, and I know him, we could possibly talk to him, maybe on a Saturday morning or early one morning to have coffee with him and just talk about it a little bit and start to initiate that instead of his staff, and then see what we can do in that area. And you make a good impression, so I think that would be important.
Well, thank you. Yes, I'd be more than willing to.
Lastly, and I don't want to go there at this point, let's see what we can do together. We do have, in South and North Omaha, the treasures offices that could possibly be used. Now, Saturdays could be a little bit of a challenge, security, like you said, but let's work together and maybe initiate possibly a meeting. I think I'm gonna see him Wednesday night at a function. He's being honored as an outstanding young Omaha on this Wednesday night, a reception. I'll bring it up to him at that time, too.
That'll be great. Just let me know. I mean...
But I think you should initiate, saying, "I'd like to maybe meet you for coffee." Commissioner Boyle or Morgan might come along, or just yourself.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. I'll be more than happy to.
Thanks a lot.
Well, and thank you, Brian, for being successful to come down and talk to us about this. And again, there's no one who is trying to not make it easy for voters, but I haven't heard of any complaints. In fact, it's the opposite. I've heard many kudos about how the operation has worked this past election cycle. So one of the other things, there wasn't an A-bill, there isn't an appropriation attached to this. We sent in the fiscal note of what this is gonna cost us, and so we appreciate you coming here, but I think it is a good idea to have a conversation with Senator Vargas.
Absolutely.
So we can get that some... Okay. Commissioner Duda?
Well, I would prefer if we made these decisions in-house. Having the Election Commissioner from Nebraska's territorial days sitting on our board gives us a lot of built-in expertise.
State coaches.
He used to sit there and go like this, right?
I really would prefer if we could make these decisions instead of the state making them for us. As you point out, if we're gonna do a location, it's a minefield to figure out where to put that location, and rather than having somebody in Lincoln saying, "Okay, we know what, where the locations should be for you," but I would bow to the expertise. I would like to take a stand in opposition to LB 163, but should we have this conversation with Senator Vargas first? Is that a little less confrontational to, than I will hold off on?
Okay.
I agree with what you said, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I'd just like to say one quick thing. City elections are in April and May, so we always have a lower turnout, so be sure, get out and vote both in April and May. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
There are just a couple more items we're gonna take before we get into the Board of Equalization, and one of those is under recognition and proclamations. It's the recognition of Douglas County Sheriff's Captain Wayne Hudson for being honored with the county's Martin Luther King Award, and this was brought to us by Commissioner Boyle.
Right. I was at the presentation ceremony. Captain Hudson, for those of you who don't know, is the gentleman who controls security at the Hall of Justice with all of the, thank you, with all of the trials that go on. He's the person that makes the place safe, and it's a big job. Plus, he has also been very active in the community. He's very available, and so I want to very briefly read this proclamation. "On January 11, 2017, Douglas County Sheriff's Captain Wayne Hudson was honored for his commitment to diversity, inclusivity, and equality, and was presented with Douglas County's Martin Luther King Jr. Award. And whereas Captain Hudson is a 20-year veteran, 21-year veteran of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, beginning his career as a deputy in 1995, and working his way up to the ranks to the current rank of capson overseeing the Court Operations Bureau. And whereas Captain Hudson has worked to increase diversity within the Sheriff's Office by reaching out to local black churches to promote career opportunities and mentoring candidates of color, to prepare them for the selection process involved in becoming a law enforcement officer. And whereas outside of the Sheriff's Office, he is highly involved in the community serving on executive boards of local nonprofits and organizations such as the Women's Center for Advancement, Men Against Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, Black Police Officers Association of Omaha, National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, and the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. And whereas this board wishes to thank Commissioner, Captain Hudson, for his outstanding contributions to the Sheriff's Office and to the community, and congratulate him on receiving this award. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes Captain Wayne Hudson for his commitment to diversity, equality, and community service, and congratulates him on receiving the Douglas County's Martin Luther King Jr. Award dated this 24th day of January 2017. Congratulations, Captain."
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Would you like to say anything?
Just briefly. First of all, I want to thank Sheriff Dunning and Chief Deputy Wheeler for allowing me the time off during my job to, and off hours, to do community service and serve on boards. I want to thank the county board for recognizing me today. This award is very special to me because of the man that this award represents. Dr. Martin Luther King set out to change the hearts and minds of all Americans. One of Dr. King's goals was to give every American an opportunity to rise to their full potential. I'm merely a product of those that went before me and helped pave the way so that I can stand here before you today and be recognized for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Commissioner Boyle?
Could I, could I ask the sheriff to step up to, I mean, the sheriff is your boss?
He is.
Maybe, maybe we'll get him on record saying nice things about you.
Tim Dunning, Douglas County Sheriff, we're very proud of Wayne. Obviously, we submitted his name for this very prestigious award, and we're very proud of the work that he does, whether you know, well, I guess you're gonna know at the Human Resources Committee meeting today, the extent of the work and challenge that he has as being in charge of the Court Services Bureau, which is the largest bureau that we have in the Sheriff's Office, and he does, he does a fantastic job, and I hope you'll agree with me after the Human Resource meeting.
Right. You know, on a side note, the sheriff is by contract of the Building Commission. It provides all of the security when you come into the building, the people outside, the people in this room, and does a terrific job. It's a very coordinated effort. The sheriff is in charge of it, and Captain Hudson is one of the very key persons in that, in that organization. So we're, we're really fortunate to have you, Sheriff Dunning, and also Captain Hudson. Thank you for your skills and service. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there, there was a motion in a second. Could you please vote? And then, if you'd want to come around and shake our hand?
Let's see if it passes first.
Oh, yeah.
Sheriff, it passes. Sheriff, you can come by, too, if you want to.
No, he was, he was running the other way. And there is one presentation by an Abigail Tyson, and I don't know if she's in the chamber yet. Oh, you are in the chamber, okay. If you would want to come forward and do your formal invitation to us for the victims of the Haiti hurricane. And if you could state your name and who you're with, please.
I'm Abigail Tyson, and this is Dominique Austin. So we're here to invite the county commissioners to an event that we're holding, Iowa Western in Council Bluffs, Iowa. So he's actually going to do most of the talking.
Okay.
Is there a way that I can set up a video? This is just the usual, please do not... Is there a way that I can set up a video? Yeah. I can, no, I just have this... I don't ever go to... I don't need this square edge, but...
Commissioner Boyle is our non-expert IT person. If you can't get it to work, can you just go ahead?
Well, we actually just, it should be coming up now.
I think, yeah, please.
Can you give this to Dan? Good morning.
Okay.
Ready?
Hello.
Good morning, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Borgenson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, and Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you.
You know, I am honored to be in grace in your presence, and thank you for this opportunity to speak and taking your time out of your busy schedules. You know, my name is Dominique Austin. I am at the World Mission Society Church of God, and here in Oma, Nebraska. Today, I actually want to introduce our organization to the, to the community leaders and speak about the volunteer services we do locally. The Church of God has received international recognition with the UK's, United Kingdom's Queen Award for voluntary services, and we want to bring this attention to this panel. We also want to cordially invite you to this upcoming concert to better introduce you to our organization, which is making a positive impact on Douglas County, Nebraska. Before I get into the Queen's Award that we received in 2016, I'd like to ask you a question, just for you to think about. You know, what do you desire? Personally, what do you desire? Is it success? Happiness? A beautiful future for your children? What about the people in Haiti? What do they, what do they desire? Hope. Hope is all they have. Hope is the only thing that they actually desire. You can help. Together, we can help and bring hope to Haiti. The World Mission Society Church of God strives to take lead in voluntary services. The Church of God has received the Queen's Award for the voluntary services such as blood drives, environmental cleanups, food donations, disaster relief efforts, and senior care. Our Elohim God has taught us that we should be good Samaritans to our global communities. If one suffers, don't we all suffer? The Church is hosting this charitable concert, "To Live by the Words Given by God," to help Haiti rebuild after it's been faced with so much devastation. We want to show them that we love them and that God is with them. The World Mission Society Church of God was founded by second-come Christ, Christ Anton Home, in 1964. There are over 2,500 churches in 170 different countries. The 2.5 million members of the Church of God around the world try their best to be the salt and the light... the salt and the light of the world. Following the example of our Heavenly Mother, they selflessly carry out volunteer work in each region that they are located in. And as Christ promised, people are noticing the good efforts of the volunteers in giving glory to God for them. I would like to show you a brief and a short introductory video about our church.
Do you know about how long it is?
It's 15 minutes?
Ooh, no, that's.
No. And I also have a three-minute video. Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So I'll come from there. Well, in recognition of the outstanding volunteer services that we receive, the Church of God has received many awards worldwide and nationwide, including Orders of Merit, Medals of Honor, Presidential citations, Certificates of Recommendation, and Plaques of Gratitude, and Letters of Appreciation. While we have given charitable concerts benefiting Nepal after the devastation of the 8.1 earthquake in 2015, Chile in 2010, and the flood victims in Thailand, and the earthquake victims in Turkey in 2010, our goal is to plant the seeds of faith and optimism with love of our Heavenly Mother. We don't do these things to gain recognition by man, but to please our God. All these things have happened with the help of our God. So with that, I would like to show a three-minute promotional video.
This world has so much to offer: excitement, invigoration, and so many opportunities. In the age of technological advancement, it seems like the world is at our fingertips. In your life, what is it that you desire the most? What do they desire? They have nothing. Hope is their only desire. In 2016, a Category 5 hurricane rocked Haiti, bringing destruction to an already devastated and impoverished nation. You can help right now. You can bring hope. Together, we can make a difference. The World Mission Society Church of God strives to take the lead in voluntary service through various volunteer service activities such as blood drives, environmental cleanups, food donations, disaster relief, and senior care. In 2010, the Church of God was invited to the United Nations Headquarters in New York to present a donation to aid the victims of the deadly earthquake in Haiti. The Church was honored with the US President's Volunteer Service Award three times in 2011, 2014, and 2015, the Korea Presidential Group Citation in 2015, and the Queen's Award for Voluntary Service in 2016. The Elohim Orchestra Charitable Concert Tour began when Haiti was subject to the effects of the Category 5 hurricane in late 2016. The tour began in downtown Denver at the Denver Performing Arts Complex. Despite their busy schedules, many people in the Midwest region gathered together to show kindness to the global villagers who are in need. The contributions raised through this event were presented to the Central Emergency Response Fund of the United Nations. As a result, on December 13, 2016, the General Pastor of the Church of God was invited to participate in the High Level Pledging Conference for the United Nations' surf.
The Church of God would like to continue to support the surf and looks forward to working with other entities of the UN in the future to help all those in need. Thank you very much. God bless the UN.
The Elohim Orchestra will continue the charitable tour by visiting Omaha, Nebraska. Although one cannot achieve much, if we shine together, we can succeed. Please do not turn away from those who are faced with difficulties. If we help them and encourage them, sharing even the smallest things, we can feel true happiness and joy. On February 26, 2017, please join us at the Arts Center at Iowa Western for the Elohim
The Church of God in Omaha, Nebraska would like for you all to join us in this charitable concert in Council Bluffs, Iowa, at the Arts Center of Iowa Western on February 26, 2017. My question is, are you ready to provide hope? Thank you for your time. Are there any questions for us?
See, no questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more item before we move to Board of Equalization, and that is a public hearing and resolution providing public approval for issuance by Hospital Authority Number Two of Douglas County, Nebraska, not to exceed $1 million aggregate principal, $100 million aggregate principal amount of revenue bonds for the benefit of Children's Hospital and Medical Center. Joel Vanderbein from Kootak Rock is here if there are any questions or would like to say anything during the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're here to answer any questions. If there are questions, Scott Kaminsky is here from Children's Hospital and Medical Center. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Boyle.
Benefit of those in the audience who are taxpayers, would you explain what the county's involvement is in this so that they know that we're not writing you a check for $1 million?
Sure. This is a public hearing required by the federal tax code in order for bonds to be issued by the Hospital Authority Number Two for the benefit of Children's Hospital and Medical Center. The proposed bond issue is in the amount of $100 million. It would finance a portion of their new building and expansion project that Scott could describe in detail, whatever detail you'd like.
And our involvement is what?
I'm sorry, the Section 147F of the federal tax code requires the approval of the highest elected official of the relevant governmental entity that's serving as a conduit issuer for the bonds. That's the county board in the case of our issuer, the hospital authority. The hospital authority is a conduit issuer, which means it has no obligation with respect to the bonds, but serves in that capacity so that Children's Hospital can access the benefits under the federal tax code.
The county has no risk.
The county has no obligation, no risk.
Thank you. If you'd like that on the record.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'd like to ask you, I know that the airport just passed a resolution to issue $70 million in bonds for a new parking garage to the north of the present parking garage. What would this $100 million, if you don't mind, just briefly, so that people might hear the expansion? I'm not sure if this ties into the announcement recently of the 10-story addition that you're doing along Dodge, or what it might be.
Yes, specifically, it is the 10-story addition that was, we had groundbreaking back in December. It'll consist of, the project consists of a 10-story addition to the hospital, renovation of about 100,000 square feet of existing hospital space, as well as the construction of approximately 1,000-car garage, all there on the site contiguous with the existing Children's Hospital.
Great.
Excellent, and we appreciate the good work Children's Hospital does in our community. It's really a great asset to, not only Omaha, but to the state of Nebraska and states around us, the work that you do.
Thank you. It's a privilege to help the children in the community in the region.
Thank you.
This is the public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? For or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I will now ask for a motion to recess out of the Board of Commissioners and enter into the Board of Equalization.
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
One second, please.
We are now in the Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, January 10, 2017, and Item B, Call for Meeting and Set Tuesday, January 31, 2017, as a date for hearing on Certified Assessment Corrections Reflecting the Addition of Omitted Property to the Tax Rules or Increased Value on Property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Still move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. There are two resolutions, D and E. Mr. Esch, you wanted to make a comment during this, for Resolution E.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Borgensen. Dan Esch, Douglas County Clerk, just wanted to, I still don't know if this is necessary for me to do since I'm not voting, but I just wanted to disclose to everybody that under Item E, there's two passenger vans that belong to an organization, a board member of the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, so just wanted to make that known.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve D and E?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any further questions or comments? Please vote. Next is discussion. Item F, Discussion Evaluation Increases, and that's why you're all here today. And so what we thought we would do is have our assessor, where, there she is, if she could come down and give us the layout of what and how this came about. And then I would ask the Commissioners to wait until she is done, and then we'll have each of us, if we have any questions or comments, to speak one time so that we can leave time for our citizens to talk to us. So Diane, if you want to come, or Mike, or whoever, Jack, is ever going to do the presentation to come down, please. Good morning.
I figured I might as well start bringing a little stool because I can never see who I'm speaking with. Good to see me, thank you. It's good to see you too. Good morning, Commissioners. Diane Battiauto, Assessor, Register of Deeds. And our office, we would like to make a presentation this morning regarding the preliminary values for 2017. This is a little too high, but anyway. Members of my staff are going to assist me today, Mike Goodwillie, my compliance officer, Jack Baines, my chief field deputy. As I proceed with this presentation, it would be very helpful in understanding the presentation if you would save your questions till the close, jot them down as we go forward, and then we can answer questions after we're done. Initially, I'd like to ask Mike Goodwillie, my compliance officer, to walk us through some of the basics of Nebraska law regarding the requirements of our office that we have to meet in assessing property every year.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mike Goodwillie, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. I kind of need to negotiate this stool. Just by way of background, we do have some requirements both constitutionally and under Nebraska state statutes that are probably helpful to discuss just briefly before we go on to the substance of the presentation. The most basic requirement is contained in Nebraska Constitution, Article 8, Section 1, which requires that property taxes be levied by valuation and uniformly and proportionately, uniformly and proportionately is a phrase that always gets shortened down to equalization. What equalization means is not that all four-bedroom, three-bathroom homes have the same dollar amount, but that essentially they're all valued at the same relative standard. Statutorily, we are obliged for both residential and commercial property to value that property at its actual value each year. And actual value is defined as the most probable price expressed in terms of money that a property will bring if exposed for sale in the open market, or in an arms-length transaction between a willing buyer and a willing seller, both of whom are knowledgeable concerning all the uses to which the real property is adapted and for which it is capable of being used. So essentially, we're looking at what the marketplace tells us based on the behavior of buyers and sellers, and at the highest and best use of that property. In the packet I provide, we provided you toward the bottom of the first page, I've also provided a couple of citations from some state Supreme Court cases, which have held in the past that the critical issue when you're dealing with actual value is the value of the entire property, not the proportion of that value which is allocated to the land or to the improvements by the appraiser. So if you are looking at the value of an individual property, what really matters is the total in the end. And then the last item I wanted to provide you as means of perspective is we do have a target every year. The state of Nebraska requires us to value property, commercial and residential property, at between 92% and 100% of its market value every year based on assessment sales ratios. And that's an annual target. So with that, I would turn it back over to Diane.
And as Mike said, you do all have a packet that we'll be referencing as we go forward as some visual aids for the public. When we value real property, our goal is to accurately reflect the behaviors of buyers and sellers in our real estate market. When the administration changed, we revamped our process to actually verify sales determining whether, thank you, determining whether a sale is or not an arms-linked transaction, suitable for using in developing models and value. Our office works hard to review and verify sales activities between buyers and sellers because the definition of actual value under state law requires us to determine the most probable price that a willing buyer will pay a willing seller. The sales verification that we do countywide and on a regular basis currently is important because only verified sales are actually used in developing valuation models. The data we gather from the marketplace goes into those models for classes of property in different portions or market areas of our county. Those values are then tested against current selling prices to make sure in those arms-linked transactions, to ensure that what we put into our model and have come out as values are actually correct and reflecting the market. Land values are the beginning step. They've always been an issue in Douglas County. In reviewing land values in the past, there were over 76,000 parcels with land values that were override values within our system. That means that they weren't derived from any type of market-based system or model, but instead were derived ad hoc. They were improvised numbers that may have been utterly arbitrary. To meet the actual value standard for overall value of the property that is required of us, developing a market-based model for land values was our starting point. As we worked through this process, we determined that land values had not been adjusted to reflect the market value in a number of years. And there were also neighborhoods in our areas that had not been reappraised for a number of years. Now be aware, and as Mike said, that the valuation number for land is, under Nebraska law, far less important than the overall value of that property. What matters is the total value in comparison to what is happening in the marketplace. The total value- value can be reviewed against sales of similar properties in that area. The neighborhood sales search function on our website can give property owners a listing of similar recent sales in their area, and they can even map out their locations. The data that we're seeing shows a rising residential real estate market. The roots of it were evident last June. In wake of the Turk increase, it was very clear that values were starting to increase. In fact, the Omaha World Herald even did a study last June to that effect on June 12th of 2016 article that I quote, "A World Herald analysis suggests that even after the state mandated hikes, nearly half of the county's homes have valuations too low to meet state standards," unquote. Recently, the Department of Revenue issued a press release indicating that residential property increased 4 percent in 2016 statewide. Lancaster County, who normally does a residential reappraisal every three years, are doing one this year a year ahead of schedule, just because of what they are seeing in their residential real estate market. Because Douglas County, being the largest county, sets the trends in Nebraska, that began here first, and the numbers show a bigger increase. Countywide, we're at about 8.5 percent. But as with any average, some areas have been moving faster still, and there's others who have been decreasing. So it varies throughout our county. For people who at various times have wished that the Douglas County residential real estate market would pick up, a side effect of that is starting to occur in the rising adver- adver- adverlim tax values, excuse me. So I brought several visual aids for us here, and most of them are in your packet. And if you bear with me, I will get those out. Turn this on. Is it already on? Oh, there it is. Let's see here. No, that's in. Pardon me. I'm just going to try to get this up so the public can see this. The first list we have is a comparison of list prices to the 2016 assessed value and the 2016 preliminary value. And what I do really, there you go, what I do really want to stress is that the reason that we're mandated to put our preliminary values out on the website in the middle of January is so things like this can happen, that people can take a precursor view, a snapshot, of what those preliminary values are, and give everybody the opportunity to address those issues, make an appointment, come in and talk to their appraiser, and discuss any variances or inaccuracies that we may have with our data. It also allows-
Diane, what are the columns? We have no headings.
Okay, I'll get there. I'll get there. I'm just doing a little precursor, Mike. You have it right in front of you, too.
No, I don't. I gave mine away to someone to read.
Oh, okay, well, all right.
Thank you, that helps.
There you go. It also allows, it allows the property owner to uncover any discrepancies that we may have in our data. Our data can be only, our values can be only as accurate as the data we have in our database. So we're always looking forward to correcting any discrepancies we may have from the past that we have in our records. It also gives us an opportunity to speak with that property owner and give them the basis of our valuation, show them their property record file and how we derived their value. We also this year have a new component from our GIS section that will show them a map, and I'll show you a little sample of it in a little bit, that actually gives them a visual that they can take with them of different property sales and values in their area, in their neighborhood. So this first one is a list of the list prices. And we took a snapshot, this is just randomly done from last Sunday's, I think it was last Sunday's living home section in the World Herald. It's not meant to be scientific. It simply grabs a random dozen sales from the World Herald section of the paper from all over the county. So as you can see, 11 out of these 12 sales, the asking price is higher, in some instances significantly higher, than the assessed and the preliminary values, even allowing for some degree of negotiation between the buyer and seller of a final purchase price. At a minimum, these numbers are indicative of a rising market. I just want to reference a few for those who may not be able to see the screen. We have an address, and I apologize if any of these property owners are in the room, but as we all know, it's all public record. 1363 Butler, it's listed at 214,900. Their 2016 assessed value was only 167,600. Their preliminary 2017 value is 180,700, which is still significantly under what they're asking for. Now, we all know what you ask for and what you get is two different things. But we wanted to give you a picture of what's happening in different areas of our market. 1322 South 35th Avenue, that's on the market for $325,000. Their 2016 assessed value is 187,200. Their preliminary value in 2017 remained the same. It's listed for 325,000. 5107 Lafayette, and I'm trying to get different parts of the county for examples. 5107 Lafayette, that's on the market for 345,000. 2016 values were 276,700, and the preliminary values for 2017 is 298,400, above 2016, still under what they're asking for. So there's a wide variety of situations in rising and declining markets. Secondly, I have two pages here. I don't have to show them both, but you have them in your packet, Commissioners. But this is, let me lower that down here, see if I can get it in a little bit more. This is comparison of actual sale prices, and we pulled out some zip codes, 68154, 30, 24, and 37. These are, these are sales that were actually completed sales. The zip codes were selected at random. We avoided new construction because when new construction enters into it, we don't know what portion of new construction they're in, if they're just starting, if they're all the way through, if they've completely closed, or whatever. So we did, we did take, they sometimes skew the comparison. As you look at these two pages, the sale prices, actual solds, are greater than the preliminary values in 2017 in 15 out of the 20 examples. Again, an indicator of a rising market. Let me give you an example. 68154, we have 1015 South 117th Circle. Their sale price, what they got from a buyer and a seller, was 290,000. Their 2016 values was 220,300, 70,000 under what they actually got for it. Their 2017 preliminary value is 220,700, still significantly under that 3, excuse me, that 290,000 sale price. 68130, okay, we have a little bit of variance in there.
Can you move it up, Diane?
Pardon me?
Move it up.
Oh, move it up, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Oh, there we go. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I see. Oh, yeah, it really shrinks it, doesn't it? Okay, we've come a little bit closer on some of these. If you say like 17206 Walnut Plaza is the last one, it sold for 192.5. In 2016, it was valued at 171.5. In 2017, its preliminary value is 186.8, a little bit closer to that sale price. Trying to find one, here's one, that 3208 South 185th Avenue in zip code 68130. It sold actual value for $450,000. It's valued in 2016 at 447.1, but we are higher in 2007 preliminaries at 517.1. That could be an anomaly. Like I said, you're never going to get everything in the same structure in the same neighborhood. So we do have some that are above and many that are below. 15 out of the 20 of these are below their actual sale price. We, the other one, I'll just put this just briefly for you so you can just see, we did 68124 and 68127. Same scenario. We have actual sale prices in 15 out of the 20 total. They're under their 2017 preliminaries are under what they actually got for the house, and the other five, they are over. And that all goes into the modeling when you compare mass appraisal. Thirdly, we have a map, and it's going to take me a second to get this in line for you. Oh, no, face up. You'll never see anything. It's if it's face down. I think that's, is it out of close, Jack? To give a good picture. Okay. This is a map of a neighborhood near Westside High School. To the left, in the left center, oh, let me move this a little bit. Okay, in my very left edge of my screen is South 90th Street. Then we have Williams, Woolworth, et cetera. Up here, we have Pacific. Then we go down to Francis. Anyway, it's at the top of my screen, which you can't see, is actually the, looks like a football field, and anyway, near Westside High School. This is a neighborhood in which the land had not been reviewed in many, many years, nor had there been a neighborhood-wide reappraisal for some time. Now, the square we have in yellow represents a parcel that was recently on the news because the 2016 assessed value was 204,300. The 2017 preliminary value is greatly increased to 488,500. That's huge. We are not denying. That is absolutely huge. The bulk of that increase is coming as a change in the land value. There's five parcels that are outlined in blue that you can see. Oh, that's why I'm supposed to be using this, aren't I? I don't think I know how to use this. Can I use just my pen? Is that okay? Are you able to see how I'm doing it with my pen?
Yeah.
Okay. The parcels in blue, one, two.
Five of them.
There's five of them. There's one, three, four, five. The five parcels in blue. These parcels represent either vacant lots that sold, or sales of lots that originally had houses on them, and the houses were immediately knocked down and larger homes built. The purchasers on these properties were clearly interested in only the land and not the improvement. The prices on these range from 375,000 to 506,000. You're talking about basically just for the land because they knocked the houses down in a couple, in two of them, I think, and built new. All of these properties are within five blocks of the subject property in yellow. Now, if you had one such sale of this situation in an area, you might be able to disregard it as what's called an outlier, or an anomaly, something that isn't appropriate for the area. But we have five sales within the same neighborhood that have the same sales factors to them and the same underlying issues for the land. So given the number of these sales and the prices they paid, it's a factor in the neighborhood that can't be ignored. It's indicative of the neighborhood increase, where they want to live, what school district they want to live, how they want to, their lifestyle to be. Nobody has any control of that but those buyers and those sellers that are selling those properties. There's also 22 sales outlined in red, and you can see those in various parts. In the vicinity of the subject property where the houses were not knocked down, the sale prices indicate a very robust market in terms of prices. On your list, Commissioners, we have, on the sidebar, we have a legend that had the six sales, different sales. The first six sales are west of 90th Street, and they're not really a part of the actual neighborhood that would be in the question of this subject property. The subject property is between 84th and 90th. If you'll notice those, I'm going to move this over a little bit, and if you notice those to the west of 90th, they're more modest houses, they're much smaller lots, yet their sales prices average in excess of $314,000. The other sales. Okay. The other sales within the neighborhood of this subject property are very revealing. The closest sale geographically to the subject property, which is 7, 8, and 9, 7, 8, and 9, sold for 505,875,000 and 436,500, respectively. If you look at the sales in this neighborhood as a whole, the total value for that subject property that we have for preliminary is supported by the price of the sales in those other arms-linked transactions. So what the map provides is data relating to both land value and total value. Even if you discounted the impact of the lots in blue that were bought and torn down, the overhaul sales prices seem to support the overall value that we projected for 2017 on the subject property. I want to reference one more. There's a little note, little property here in green. The property in green is an oddity. This property was sold, let me find my notes, was sold in November of 2014 for $350,000. I think it's the last line in your map. It resold this last October, less than two years later, for $920,000, right smack in the middle of that neighborhood. So, you know, we understand that many of these increases are very large and very hard to absorb, very, very hard to understand and very hard to absorb. We're working hard to weigh our options to hopefully lessen their impact in 2017. But I want to caution everyone, absence of the imminent collapse of our real estate market this year, whatever adjustments that we could possibly make this year would in all likelihood have to be revisited next year. As an example, if values were adjusted to be no more than the midpoint of that 92 to 100 percent, the target range that we're mandated by law to hit is those, is that ratio, and that midpoint. It's called the median. If residential real estate sales increase at the rate they've been going, we will be out of range next year, and we would have to readjust values on many of those properties that we've been able to readjust this year. Or, as we noted from last June, the state will do it for us. That's when it's out of our control. So they did that last year. We don't have a crystal ball on the market. We don't have a crystal ball on the state. All we can do is do our job within the parameters of which we're bound to do them. Additionally, we do have some neighborhoods where the sales mandated a decrease. I'm going to put this, you don't have this in your, in your packet, but this is a map of the different models, our model areas in Douglas County. Okay, let me put this out a little bit. Okay, that gives a little picture to start with. Okay. This is a visual of the market area and field books with their neighborhoods in our county. The county is divided into six market areas, and within those market areas, or called field books, are the little neighborhoods, the comparable neighborhoods. Market areas 1 and 2, based on the map we have, represents the bulk of the county from 72nd Street to the Missouri River, and you can see, there's little pockets, but it basically goes 72nd to the Missouri River, and then north to, up to our, close to our border. Essentially, we're trying to subdivide the county in ways that enable the grouping and valuation of properties that are similar in characteristics and similar in market influence. In looking at areas market 1 and 2, which is the green, although each area as a whole increased approximately 4 percent, in the individual smaller groupings, a number of them have net declines. So I want to just run through the different market areas and where our overall preliminary change percent is. In market area 1, which is the yellow, we have an overall value change in our preliminary values increase of 4.27 percent. In market area 2, which is the green, we have an overall preliminary value change up 3.97 percent. We're going to move over to market area 3, which is all the orange, and let me get that on your scope for you. Okay. Market area 3, which is the orange area, we have an overall increase for our 2017 preliminary values of 8.83 percent. In market area 4, which is all the blue, and you can pretty much see that, I don't have to move it. Roughly, to the north would be Fort, to the south would be Pacific, and then there's little pockets here in other places. It goes all the way over, it looks like, to 7, to It goes all the way over, it looks like, to maybe 48th or 50th Street, 72nd. So that's roughly where it is. The north would be Fort. This part of the south is Pacific, but it stems down farther toward, in different pockets, toward the county line.
Okay, can we...
Can we go on?
Well, say your boundaries, but I can't have people jumping in and...
Okay. And it's roughly, because you'll see there's different pockets. The farthest western pocket of the orange, area three, is out here, northwest Dodge Road, south Pacific, east, oh, I can't see, 204th, and west, a little bit beyond 204th. That's that little pocket. And then as you go in, this is Dodge Street, this is Fort Street, this is Harrison Street, and then the pockets just, this is 144th. And I think this is, is this on our website, Mike? Do we have this on our website? We can certainly put this up on our website. I think it might be, but I'm not really sure, but we can definitely put this up on the website so somebody can peruse it as they need to.
Thank you.
And there again, as you come in for your preliminary meetings, you're going to have that overview that I just showed you in the green, you're going to have some pick, some overlay, excuse me, aerials that will help for you to note your specific area. Okay. So let's go back to area four is in blue, and their overall increase for preliminaries in 2017 is 8.36. Now, where we come up in the values that are of the biggest concern is areas five and six. Area five is in red. These are more new additions, new construction, new, you know, new areas, sometimes sales are more active, variety of reasons. In area five, which is red, the overall increase is 23.01.
Can you get the boundaries of four and five? Okay. Can you give the boundaries of five and six?
I thought you said four and five. Did you say four and five?
I would ask that people not do that, please, but could you please give the boundaries of five and six, what to talk about.
Okay. And area six, which is the rest of our outlying counties, most not even in the city, but in the county, and their overall increase was 21.07 percent. So we have two that are significantly higher, and there is no dispute of that.
And the boundaries?
Oh, the boundaries, I'm sorry. Okay, the boundaries of six, which is the beige, is our county line, Dutch Hall Road, to the north, the parts of the river are our eastern bounty line. On the west side, it goes all the way to the Elkhorn and Platt River, to the boundaries of Douglas. This right here is 240th Street. This is Fort Street. It juts over to Military, this comes up Military, I-680, and on all the outlying parts of the county. Does that explain enough for those who are interested in number six?
Yes.
Okay. Number five. The north part is Fort. The farthest, well, the one that can read, it juts out to, this is 204th right here. So it goes west, but not all the way to 240th, juts in a little bit, and then just backs out beyond 240th. And there again, to the county line. This is 180th, this is 168th, and then there's little pockets. Does that answer everybody's question for number five?
Thank you.
And what was the increase in five?
Twenty, that was the highest, 23, let me double check, because I don't want to say it wrong. I think it was 23.01, but let me double check.
Yep.
23.01.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have that. Our office is charged with doing mass appraisal. This means that we're concerned with the broad mass of well over 215,000 parcels of real estate. That must be valued every year in Douglas County. When you attempt to build models to value that many properties, there will be outliers, which is arms-linked transactions with prices far above or far below the norm. Those are the properties I'm sure that are in question for most of the people, is those that have significant increases out of the norm that have sold. For those properties and others, we're happy to meet and discuss those values with the property owners during our preliminary meetings that are going on now. You can call between now and February 10th. You can call our office at 402-444-6734. You can mail in your documentation. You can email in your documentation, or you can walk in. I want to remind you, if you walk in, because we are very, very busy, you may have a long wait. So that would be my last option if I were to suggest one of the options. Everything on dcassessor.org has all the information regarding the process, the data you should bring with you, and everything you might need to come have an informal meeting with your appraiser. So finally, and I'm going to take this off, so we, oh, I don't have to take it off, but I guess I'll take it off. Finally, value is one piece of the tax puzzle. Value has only, is only one part of how it affects the money that comes out of your pocket. The other is the tax rate. There's several political subdivisions that levy property taxes. Now, if those political subdivisions wish, they can certainly adjust levies to reflect the increased value of real property so that it's not a huge hit on the property owners with the justification that we just showed everyone here. As an example, a number of years ago, the levy rate for Douglas County itself, which is only one little portion of your tax dollar, was 26 cents. It was the fifth lowest county level rate in the state, the fifth lowest. In recent years, as agricultural values have increased dramatically due to sales prices of agricultural land, many of the counties with a lot of agricultural land have even reduced their property levy rates to well below that of Douglas County. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. For those of a more technical nature, though, I'll refer to Jack Baines, my chief field deputy.
Okay. And just to remind everyone, I'm going to have the commissioners ask, speak one time so that we can hear from the taxpayers. So Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. First, for everybody watching, you can go and watch replay of this on our YouTube channel. You have to look up Douglas County, Nebraska, and do a search on YouTube, and you'll find replays of all of our meetings since we started, putting it on YouTube. And Diane, I do have some concerns. In the past, didn't the assessor mail out the preliminary values?
No.
No?
Never. We've never mailed out preliminary values.
Okay. Because there's...
I think you might be thinking of, in June, in between the middle of May and June, we send out to only those who have value increases, but we don't do anything with preliminaries because that's exactly what they are.
The problem is, the problem with that that I see is how someone who doesn't have internet access, nor transportation to the library, is supposed to know that their taxes...
We've received many, many, many phone calls with just that question, and have been able to answer that question for them. We do not have the funding or the resources to send out preliminary, and it would be sort of an inefficient use of dollars because of the fact, that's what they are as preliminary.
I realize that. I don't know, I don't agree that it'd be inefficient use of dollars. I also see problems with banks and trusts and other people who find, who hold the title to many pieces of property and pass it on to the mortgage payer. The mortgage payer doesn't see the increase, and it just comes automatically out of their monthly payment.
Well, state...
I'm thinking particularly of something that happened with the trust in Las Vegas before you were the assessor, and the trust didn't realize that the description on the assessor's site had the wrong description of the building, very wrong. And his tenants had been paying for the increase for years, and of course, on the refunds, we can only go back three years, correct?
That's not my, that's the treasurer's.
Oh, that's the treasurer's, okay. And sometimes a mass appraisal, I think we need to tweak our model. For example, there are definite differences in desirability between 50th Street and 50th, east side of 50th and west side of 50th, up to 51st. Then it changes again, 51st to 52nd. At 52nd and west, it changes dramatically again, and they're only a block apart, each one of these. And if you drive the neighborhood, you can see it, and if you look at the sales numbers, you can fill it, with a few exceptions. There's an old saying, the value of your house is based many times on what is in front of you, what you see when you come out the front door, than what you see out the back door. And there are many instances in subdivisions where that is. Now, commercial property, you know, the tenants usually absorb the increase, but mine went up three times, 300 percent. My tenants, I know I will lose, I only have two tenants, I know I'll lose one of them, definitely. And I know the other one, when his lease comes out for renewal, will say, "No way." So, you know, the property, my property will become pretty much worthless. I do plan to protest, just so everybody knows. I usually don't protest, just because of my position, but this one, I feel I have to. Now, the state mandates to increase a Goodley portion of Omaha by 7 percent, along with reducing by 8 percent last year. How is this going to affect that? Are we going to go over the 100 percent, since they brought us up to what the Turk felt was equalization?
Well, I may, I have a couple of, you've asked me a lot of questions.
Yes, I have.
So I'm going to try to...
Some of them are more rhetorical.
Okay. I'm going to try to address them as well as my old memory can allow me to do. Number one, I, you know, we do have the market areas that we use for valuation for mass appraisals. Mass appraisal is not something that we just tweak, that we are mandated by state to do mass appraisal, so I would, in all due respect, argue the point that we can just change the way we do business because the state tells us how we, that we do business. Secondly, when you mention some different street areas about desirability, A, desirability is in the eye of the buyer, and I would reflect that if there's people in this audience that live in those areas might take offense to saying their property, their area is less desirable than another area. So it's all up to a buyer. Thirdly, you said your taxes are going to go up, and you will lose tenants and lose business. That's in your ballpark somewhat. So you can't say just from...
Well, I realize that.
But I'm just saying, you can't, but the preliminary values are just that. That's why it gives us an opportunity. All of this is addressing residential properties, and what I'm saying is that we won't really know until the whole process is completed.
And I realize that. I realize that properties go up, and if I lose a tenant, it's my problem, but it also affects the value of the building.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Now, so it is not only my problem, it's the entire tax system problem. Now, the other thing is, and I didn't come to argue about one particular piece of property. One house on 49th Street gave me this research data of her neighborhood. Her house, for some reason, is valued easily 20 percent higher, and she is protesting, she has an appointment already, than any other property in her area, and her square footage is smaller, her house is not in as good a shape, and it is almost twice as much as some of the houses in her area within a block, her for-sell at.
For sale?
For sale.
Okay.
Market listed price. Another lady who called me, and believe me, I've been on the phone a lot.
So have we.
Bought her house six months ago, and now it's being assessed at almost double what she paid for. Okay. She too has an appointment to talk to you.
To visit with us.
So I don't know when you did your sales market data.
Our cutoff is, Jack, September 30th?
September 30th, 2014.
Our sales go from two years back, from September 30th, 2014, till October of this past year.
Okay, so she should be...
Is when we have to do our cutoffs for state.
She should be in your database then, as to where she paid for it.
I would have to, we would have to research that.
Well, I'll let her...
Yes, and that's fine, and it's issues like those that we want to visit with that property owner, and we want to show them what we have and how we derive their values.
Right.
And they show them what, show us what they have.
Correct.
Jack, did you have anything to add, or did I do okay? You have to identify yourself first.
Jack Baines, chief field deputy. The main difference may be we have a data error on that property, too. If it's 20 percent higher than everybody else in the neighborhood, it kind of lends itself that we have something on that property record that's probably not correct.
Okay. And what about the state mandate? Last year, a lot of the area that increased 23 percent went up 7 percent. The area that went up 8 percent increased by 7 percent. So it's a 15 percent in two years. Isn't this going to put up over the 100 percent valuation, the entire area?
What we did...
Well, hold on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
When the state tax board said, "We are now in compliance." So if we were in compliance with a 7 percent increase, if you assess the entire area an average of 2 percent, you might still be in compliance. But if you go up 8 percent, I personally don't feel our real estate market is as robust to increase the entire areas by as much as you're saying.
If I'm correct, and I'm going to pull for Jack if I'm incorrect, what they did, we pulled out the 8 percent decrease, and we pulled out the 7 percent increase and started with our 2016 numbers, and went from there.
Okay. That helps qualify things in my mind, and I think I have one more question.
Okay, Jack had to comment, too.
One other piece of data about that is, when I ran the ratios against those new values, against current sale prices, those ratios dipped below the 90 percent level. That's with the state increase.
Okay. Then you touched on this briefly. If I were to buy a house next to mine, this happened on Farnham Street, for example, between 52nd and Happy Hollow, someone tore down the house next to him, a very expensive house.
They, this happened?
Two or three or four years ago.
Okay.
Okay. How is that land evaluated? Was it evaluated at what the land alone was worth prior to tearing down the house, or is now the value of the house and the land? Same thing happens in various cities, areas of the city. In Fair Acres, they tore down a house, and they're building a new house there. So how is the land evaluated then?
When the property first sells, we attribute so much value to that land, because we pretty much know what the contributory value of the improvement property is. Now, as they tear down that building or that improvement, and we see raw land, we know that that's the reason why they purchased it. The actual market value of that land is what they purchased it for, plus the demo cost of demoing that building. Now, we monitor that. We want to see that as a neighborhood trend before we start making assumptions that that is the market value of land.
And I think that's why we said in my presentation, Commissioner, is that in light of the West Side High School, if only one of that, what had happened once, we could consider that an outlier, but when it happens repeatedly, and in this instance was five times, then it has to be a factor of that neighborhood.
Right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Morgan?
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I've got some things. After getting calls, went out and drove a lot of the properties over the weekend. First of all, one fact that I think all of us know is that there's less home buyers or less homeownership than in the last 50 years, so we are seeing a trend that they're not buying homes the way they were, and we're fortunate in Omaha, have the market we have. We're not fortunate that we probably have some of the highest property taxes in the United States. I mean, if you buy the same price home in Idaho, it's going to be about one-third as far as the taxes, and their even, their sales taxes lower. But the fact is, when you talk about the consistency in equalization, where I have trouble is 12716 Leavenworth is Leewood West. And I'm sorry if I offend anyone by bringing up neighborhoods, but I had the calls about some of these and went out to check them. Okay, that property there was $48,000 for the lot, now it's been reduced to 41,800. Okay, I go a block and a quarter away on Leavenworth to 12605 Leavenworth. That land was $38,000. That's Deer Ridge, little lesser expensive homes. That one went up 300 percent, the land, to 12605 Leavenworth. That one went up 300 percent, the land, to $115,000. Then I go to 12505 Leavenworth, another block. And that one was in 2016, 2609. 2017, 300 percent increase to 817. But during the night, they reduced it down to 446. And that was told to me by the resident. So, I'm not sure-
I think Jack can speak to that, Deer Ridge, we did find some discrepancies.
All right, but the one hasn't been changed, it was 115 yet. Now, what bugs me, and I'm sorry for this. You know, I'll look at a commercial piece of property along Dodge. And I'm going west of 72nd. And it sold in May of 2015, and I interject, that's not your area, I don't think. So, it sells for $2.67 million. And in 2016, the value of that land is $1,1172. Not bad if you're the buyer of that property, because it's a nice 50 percent reduction in the value. And now, we're in 2017. And the preliminary figure for that property that was bought for $2,007,000 in '15 is gonna be at $1,007,000. So, I have trouble when I see these properties on Leavenworth having these kinds of increases, and yet you have the actual fact on a, fact on a commercial property. And then I'm gonna bring another one that I wasn't told that it should be confidential. Judge Gary Randall, one of our judges. He buys a property in July of 2016, closes Arms Lane, not a home I had listed, for $429,000. His new value, preliminary, $667,000. And I wanna say it's on about 168. These aren't 20 percent increases, and this is, you know, 50 percent. I've got another list of them, you know, and I can go to other areas. 2344, 167th and Pasadena. It goes from a value of $484,000 to $804,000. Which makes it, you know, pretty difficult for some of the people. So, and that one that you had marked in yellow on the map, and I don't wanna go through all of them, I have a long list, that one was on 90th Street?
Yes.
Okay, you can't compare, and I know those homes on Hickory, right off of Hickory, in the north, drove those, the lots that sold, some of the homes that were taken down there. 90th Street, you can't even compare that house on 90th. You know, because it's got an 800 percent increase in the land value. And 90th falls to the east, that lot isn't gonna sell for $337,000, no way. I mean, 90th, I mean, I know 90th Street, well, between Pacific and Center.
I think this property owner is coming in to talk to us.
Yeah, but, see, the other thing is, I don't want all these people to come down and have to battle on this.
No, and we don't, and we don't either.
I mean, we've got, we need to do a better job consistently on some of these values. And I mean, Judge Randall's a good example. Why should it be at 657? Someone didn't look at the sale price or call me up and say, "Hey, what'd this home sell for that you bought?" Judge Randall, I mean, it just seems, so he can take time to come down on that. And I'll stop because I want the people to talk. But I gotta tell ya, it's really disappointing to see some of the terrible inconsistencies that I've seen by driving some of these properties and getting the calls.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
I wanna be very-
Could I ask, I know everyone, the emotions are very high right now, so, but could we please not do that just for the sake of being respectful for, to everybody? Thank you.
I gotta say one thing, Marianne has a very difficult job. So, try to do that. And I appreciate it, but we care about you, and I know all the commissioners do, and I'm certain the Assessors Office does, but we've gotta work together to figure it out.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, it's just because you were so right, now, don't applaud. But anyway, he was so right in what he said. I'm gonna ask three really quick, pointed questions, I hope. Number one is, Ms. Bodyato, I wanna ask you, all the people in this room, what is the deadline for them to appeal and how do they get signed up to do that? What's the quickest and easiest?
To have a preliminary meeting. The phone calls started last Tuesday, the 17th. The appointments are set through February 10th. And the last day for meetings is, by statute, is February 28th.
Okay, so who do they call, do you have a number?
Yeah, I gave it a little earlier, 402-444-6734.
Okay.
They can also come in, they can mail in, they can email in, it's on our website, dcassessor.org.
Okay, that's fine. What about, the thing that really struck me was so many of these land values going through the roof. Some of them, I mean, are astronomical. Why did that happen? Is it because they haven't been valued for years, or, you know, what is it?
That's exactly what I said in the beginning. We have some, we have one property that we pulled out that had not been revalued since 1997.
Okay, so the taxpayer bears the brunt because he gets, he or she gets that big slap.
Because they've had a whole lot of years with relatively little change.
Maybe.
And, well, I'm just, I don't know, I wasn't here over two years ago. I'm just telling you what we're seeing now. I didn't create anything, you know, I'm trying to work with what I'm in charge to do and create equalization. But we have some, I have a list, those 22 properties that you have in your map. They had, last date of reappraisal for valuation goes back 2007, 2010, just on that, just in that little neighborhood. But the last date that their land had been looked at goes back to 1999, 2004, et cetera, like that. So, I, yes, we all, we absolutely know this is sticker shock. But we're trying to-
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I'm looking at a house that had, in a very moderate neighborhood on 98th Avenue, $15,100 for the lot, this year it's $33,600. I mean, I, that is crazy. Let me just go on to the next question.
Okay.
Does preliminary value become permanent if somebody doesn't speak up?
Unless we review the neighborhood, Deer Ridge was one of them.
Okay, so watch out.
We had a property owner-
What you're saying is the preliminary value morphs into the permanent value if you don't speak up. Is that what you're saying?
No, that is not what I said. What I said was that the people we talked to for prelim- I know you said the people that we don't talk to, but what I'm saying is, everybody from Deer Ridge did not come in and speak with us.
Of course not.
We had a property owner or two, I can't remember how many that they had, came in. And we, we were able to discover some errors in the characteristics or in the data we had. With that, both being in Deer Ridge, the appraisers had an opportunity to relook at all of Deer Ridge. So, even though everybody from Deer Ridge did not come in and speak with us, if we find discrepancies, we're gonna go back into that neighborhood and review it. And hopefully, if there's inconsistencies or incorrect data, we're gonna correct that data, and we're gonna review that value, and we're gonna change that value in Deer Ridge.
Okay, well, what concerns me is, I spoke to our legal counsel before this meeting, and unless a person files a complaint, you're, they are stuck with these values. And the County Board of Equalization, which is these seven, we have, we can do nothing, is what I'm told. So, it is absolutely urgent that people who feel they're overvalued file and get in and talk to Ms. Bodyato. And finally, I wanna mention something that's gonna be kinda painful for you, Ms. Bodyato. You made a reference that, you know, we set the mill levy, which we do, and we always get that conversation when they're out speaking. Well, I'm not the one who sets the ta, it's the county board that does it. Yeah, we do. Commissioner Morgan and I are co-chair of the budget. And this last year, we went in, and we have two GIS offices. And so, I said, "Well, we'll cut the one in Ms. Bodyato's office, we'll merge it with the other one." So, I told her, point blank, you remember this, Diane, we're gonna shut down-
Very clearly.
We're gonna shut down your GIS, it's moving to the other GIS. And you said, "No, it won't," that you're gonna spend the money for it anyway. So, that's part of the problem. We have no control over the spending of any of these offices.
That is not true.
We even got sued by them one time. Six offices sued us over what we had done. So, it's very frustrating to us, and I take a real offense when you suggest that we're the ones who are setting all these mill levies without regard.
I did not suggest that, I said it's part of the whole picture.
You know, but, but, Ms. Bodyato, you're in a, right now you have two offices. And I've been an advocate for trying to get you one. And it's gonna cost over a million dollars to do that. You're losing my support.
Well, I'm sorry for that, but I'm trying to do my job.
I know you are, but you don't need one office to do it anymore, I don't believe so, not at a million dollars.
Okay.
That's a whole different topic.
Thank you, well, it is, but it's-
I do wanna make one clarification, if I could, Madam Chair. As far as the opportunity to change values, the people that don't, don't come in, we have the opportunity to adjust values up until our abstract is due to the state, and that's March 25th. Which is why we embrace the opportunity to speak with people. And if they can't get in, because there's only so many hours in the day, and we have been inundated with calls because there are very, there are a lot of upset people. All of us who are property owners in Douglas County take this very seriously. But as I, as I tried to explain, if we see anomalies and discrepancies in areas, just because a person does not come in will not prevent them from getting an adjustment if that whole area deems to need an adjustment. We have till March 25th when our abstract has to go into Lincoln. And we're looking at those properties daily to make sure that we're, and we're, like I said, we're trying to explore some options that we can possibly ease some of this burden. My fear is, number one, nobody has a crystal ball for the market, and nobody has a crystal ball for what the state will do. That's my fear. Now, you know, we're, like I said, we're working every day to try to, to resolve this issue. But when we're looking at it, the numbers don't lie to us. And that's what, that's the own basic, the thing we have to work with.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'm gonna say this one time, and then I'm gonna let it alone, 'cause I might hear it again. So, I'm gonna pick up where Commissioner Boyle was. No, you didn't say that, you know, the tax comment, you didn't say it directly, but it was implied. And so, I'm gonna just say, you know, I got an issue with the letters. The letters through bulk mail out to people with Commissioner Craft say, "Well, you can send a letter for the notification." Is a lot less than some requests that we've got. And actually, more meaningful in the whole process. The letters at the beginning to people that say what their initial cost is. I think that needs to be a part of it, because that is a continual process of it. That was an issue in my district last year, and I feel the sympathy of Commissioner Craft with that. Those letters should be a part of it. And those letters are reasonable costs. And I would agree to that more than I would agree to combining offices. So, I'm saying that should find a way to work his way in there. My last, my only other thing is, if Jack or whoever could give me some, it just feels like when I look at that map, you know, the green section is on an island. Now, I drive to different parts from out, and so how so much of the yellow can spread across there and the green sits there on an island? What, I mean, that-
Oh, you're talking about our area map?
The map, so I don't know if it can pop back up.
You want me to put that back up?
Yep. Now, in happening to do this last year, I mean, I think I understand the dynamics of it, but the interplay everywhere else, you know, okay, looks a little different. I think I know some of that stock, but I just, I'm trying to come to grips with green on an island and all that yellow just spreads everywhere else. Because my issue, and some people, 'cause everybody's not that issue as that, you know, contrary to these other districts saying that they're mad 'cause their value's going up, going up. I want that district's value to go up. And I think it should be more so, somebody give me some explanation on that.
Well, I think we said that Area 2-
It went up 3 percent, but one went up 4. And, I mean, I know there's some differences in places, but when I, and I'm just telling you this question I'm gonna get, why is, why is that North Omaha section feel like it's out there on an island?
They're based on sales, Jack and I.
Yeah. This map came from-
No, I hear you, I'm just, give me the answer, because I, my issue is, I want the property to go up.
And-
And we measure the sale prices of the properties in that area. The reason why that area in green is, so to speak, in an island, is because that was our concentration last year when I came on board. We didn't have much time to do the whole county. The staff was already working on doing the inspections in this area. So, we concentrated on getting those values correct despite the 8 percent reduction that the state applied. So, that's the only reason that still looks that way. In the future, you'll see these lines being blurred because we'll get a better understanding of what these market areas are within these six different valuation areas.
And that's my deal, because last year, you all made a hit and lowered the valuation. The state came in and made a hit and lowered it again. So, that, that evaluation loan was somewhere between, I think if I can remember, 16, 10 percent at least, it was double-digit. When you did yours, and then the state did theirs, double-digit. Now, you lifted 3, which puts it still behind.
And we took the 8.
And so-
Yeah, we took that 8 reduction off.
We started from our figures.
Yeah.
And then the state did another hit.
No, this was af, this was for 2017.
For 17, we removed that 8 percent reduction, because that wasn't anything that we applied from the market. And we reanalyzed the market and applied that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just have a couple of comments, and then we'll move to the taxpayers. I got a lot of contacts too, and just for the record, not one taxpayer said to me that they were not willing to pay their fair share of taxes. What their angst is, and again, can you leave that map up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one second, I, because my areas that are most affected are those five and six areas where there are outrageous increases of the 21 and 23 percent, I think it was. And so, and a lot of those, a specific area, many I heard, heard from, were from the Ginger Cove area where their land values went up anywhere from 107 to over 250. I think the highest one was 300 and some percent. And so, while land is only a piece and not the important, the total is, that affects their total, which I have, which we all do, have retired folks, newlyweds, average citizens, and those that are on the wealthier end of the spectrum. But we are all bound by a locked revenue source that none of us are going to get that type. Even if you go to the 3 percent or 8 percent increases, nobody's gonna get that in their social security, in their pay. Nobody's gonna get those type of increases. And so, I'm not understanding why we could not have gone to the state with this information and said, "These increases are totally outrageous, they are not going to be handled by our taxpayers. We want to get into compliance, and here's our plan for the next three years." Each, or whatever it is, four years, five years, whatever, we have to submit, I think it's three years, that we submit to the state. That here's what we're going to do to rectify this situation. And I know, we're rolling the dice, because the state could've came in and, or could come in and do the same exact thing that we're doing, or last year that they did in fixing those for us, so to speak. But, to me, that would've been much more palatable to our taxpayers rather than these outrageous increases. And I don't think they're, I mean, something, we have to do something, just reducing the mill levy, and we can have another conversation about this at another time with our chief financial officer. But just rolling back the mill levy is not going to roll it back so that every taxpayer is out of that, or out of these increases. So, that doesn't, people are gonna say that solves the problem. I've had state senators that call me and say, "Are you rolling back your mill levy?" Well, we certainly will look at rolling back the mill levy, but I don't want the taxpayers leaving the chambers thinking, "If we do that, your valuation reduces or rolls back that same amount."
No, it won't change the valuation, right.
So, my personal opinion is, I've sat on this board long enough to know that equalization, the way the state law reads right now, doesn't work. We have never gotten it right, we will never get it right. Trying to do this on an equalization basis does not work. So, we have to figure out a way, working with the state on, and the taxpayers, on what we feel would be- on what we feel would be a better way to place values on homes. If homes were, and this doesn't, the, the part that, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but the part that doesn't, we don't have an answer to yet, is, um, those homes that are already sitting at their value. But any new home, any new purchase, why that isn't put at a hundred percent of the validated purchase price on day one? I don't understand that one. And then secondly, if we would change the course of how we do these, so that we use a real estate CPI index type of an increase, where everybody in the county gets whatever it is, a one to four percent, whatever that index is, increase, I can't believe we would lose the revenue, because it would be on every property versus where we're kind of doing this hit and miss right now of increases. So I just don't know how to do or get from point A to point B in changing that. But I really truly believe it's time we have this conversation with our state senators to say, "What we've done has been broken. It is broken, so let's fix it, and let's figure out how to fix it." I also talked to another commissioner in a different state. She lives in Michigan. And she said their state law actually says there will be no increase of value more than five percent on any piece of property in your county at any given year. And there's also stuff in there that there's a reduction if this happens or an increase, which I'm going to have staff look into, because that's another option. But we have to start talking about those things versus this constant coming up all the time and saying, "Twenty-three percent increase, three percent increase." Because again, I understand you're following what state law gives you to, to follow. And we are too. But it's not working, so we need to do something different.
A couple of things, Commissioner. And I, and I total, and I totally agree. We would, we would very much invite the mandates that we are required to follow be adjusted at the state level. Because whatever is, whatever statutes are revised or bills that are introduced and passed, we will follow. I totally agree there. If they go to basically, um, a ceiling of five percent increase a year, um, would be great. And that would take all the equalization away. So at that level, who, the ones who make the rules, that county officials have to follow, you're absolutely correct. That's where it needs to start. With the statutes that they sit now, we, we are bound to follow those. The, and the reasons, and when you have, the combination of this explosion is twofold. It's a combination of many, many years and some decades of not keeping up with the market and not reviewing properties. Along with the rising real estate market, to Commissioner Morgan's point of, um, there's not a lot of buyers out there. Well, some of the reasons is there're a lot, there's not a lot of inventory either, which last year, we had houses on the market for a very good price. And they would get on the market, and the next day they'd have five buyers wanting to write purchase agreements. And those houses ended up selling for more than what they were listed. So you have this un, of obvious, you have, you have the neglect of reviewing the properties for the sales that were mandated to do, and you have a rising real estate market, and they collide and cause this explosion. We did, you know, we are the, the creators of putting the data together, but we're not the creators of the sales. So we're in a, we don't like raising them this much. We don't, you know, but we need, we have to report our findings. That's a state statutes mandate that we do. Um, I would not be opposed, and like I said to the, to the property owners in the room and, and who's listening today, is that we have until, uh, our, our preliminary meetings only go till February twenty-eighth. I'm not sure we can get everybody in by February twenty-eighth with all the calls we've had. But we do have to, between February twenty-eighth and March twenty-fifth, when that abstract, I have no problem in, in making, having a meeting with, with PAD, with the Property Assessment Division. I can't guarantee what their reception will be to that, but I have no problem in doing whatever we can do to make this easier. Because all of us who are property owners have that burden. So like I said in my presentation, we are exploring options. That will be one option that we will explore and have a conversation, uh, with the Property Assessment Division. Unfortunately, we're only one out of ninety-three counties, and you would know as well as I sometimes how difficult it is to get our feelings and our, um, suggestions across. So, but we'll do everything we can.
Well, and I, I appreciate that. And one of the things that, um, while, let's just say, every taxpayer came in and found that your figures, um, were fine, um, because we now have brought everybody up because of the lack of past practices. Just say that. That's still unfair.
It still doesn't make it any better. Right.
Because, I mean, you, that may be the reality, but that is totally unfair, because it should not be on the burden of the taxpayer to pick up what has not been done in previous years. And so what I'm saying, and I would agree, and I think some of us would go with you if you want us to, to talk to that tax administrator, that we have to show, this is the, this is what we're looking at.
But we can't absorb it.
But we, the taxpayer cannot absorb these outrageous increases. And so give us this three-year window, and we will show you how we're going to fix it. They can say no. That's fine. But we've been called upon, as county commissioners, to try to help in this process. And that is what we're lending to you, is our assistance in talking to whoever we need to talk to, to say, "This is not going to happen this year. It can't happen this year."
And we try, we went that route last year when they, with the seven percent increase and the eight percent decrease. And we implored these tax administrators to give us an opportunity and the time, basically give us a mulligan last year, and was met with a no. So I want everybody to know, it's not for our lack of, we have been working very hard to, to right the ship at the least impact of the, of the property owners. But we have to win on the, on the state side too, and if they're not in agreement. We, I know, I absolutely know we needed time last year, which is why I requested that. Give us a mulligan. Don't do anything this year. Give us another year to revamp the whole county. Then we'll take a look at some, some, some of the inadequacies and where we can go from there. So I certainly, I certainly agree and would wish that that would, that they would work with us on that. So we will definitely address that.
And, and we did too. I mean, they denied us a hearing.
Yes.
But I think what we have now is the backing of our taxpayers that I, I'm willing to stand on any steps with any group of taxpayers and make a whole heck of a lot of noise if they do not hear us within a meeting. And so if we have to do that, I will do it. Because again, this, this isn't, this, this just is not reality in terms of being able, uh, taxpayers being able to pay these, these taxes. It's, it's ludicrous. And again, we can roll back the mill levy. Oh, we want to roll it back. And we will, as a board, talk very, very in-depth during our budget conversations in doing that. But that is not going to fix the taxpayers' issues. So.
And let me ask a question. I know this is kind of important. How many people are going to be available to listen to the citizens in this short window of time? You following? How many?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The informal hearings, which you're holding. So, um, right now, they're, they go until, um, February twenty-eighth. So right now, how many do you have scheduled, and how many do you, are you able to handle?
How many people do you have available?
We have, we, I, we have twenty, twenty or twenty-two appraisers that are meeting with people.
Eight hours a day, basically.
Okay.
Okay.
And they're usually, we, we allow thirty-minute windows. You know, that's not hard and fast. We schedule in thirty-minute increments, only because of the fact that in the past years, prior to this administration, they meant, they only allowed fifteen minutes, and that's really not enough for a property owner to discuss and see their property and maybe talk about any discrepancies. So we open that up to half-hour appointments.
So just two more things for me, and that is, um, on those informal hearings, um, I want the taxpayers to, to understand that that was an unfunded mandate placed on counties a couple of years ago, um, by the state. And to me, if we're not sending out notices, um, to individuals to let them know what their preliminary hearings are, to me, it's useless. It's great for those that know about it. But at the same time, they're coming in and with the, the words I've gotten back from taxpayers are, "You're being very gracious." The people who are in your office, who are listening to them and talking to them are being very gracious. But they leave there not knowing what the decision is, which I know that's not what the purpose of them is. They're supposed to be bringing in their, uh, information to show what you've placed as a value is, is different than what they feel. I get that. But then they leave and they have to wait until May
Mid-May.
to get their statement and then decide whether or not they're going to file for Board of Equalization.
In June.
Then they have to come to Board of Equalization, mail their stuff in, they'll hear, and then they wait again, or they wait again, and then they hear whether or not the Board of Equalization decided yes or no. What did they do? And then if they don't agree with the Board of Equalization, then they have to go to the Tax Equal Review Commission down at the state, the Equalization Review Commission down at the state. We are making our taxpayers jump through enormous hoops on this issue.
Unfortunately, the state is.
Right.
Yeah.
So, well, they're, they're putting it on us.
Yes, they are.
So anyway, informal hearings, unfunded mandate, in my opinion, useless if the taxpayers don't even know what their preliminary hearing is. Um, and then lastly, on these lake properties out in my district,
We'll look at that.
there's also new development lake properties. And so I, I, I would ask you to look at whether or not those new properties, those new developments, are those being looked at as comparables to the other lake properties that have been there for well over fifty-some years?
Uh, not a direct comparison, no.
Well, even if it's an indirect, to me, that's where some discrepancies could occur. So anyway, I was asked to bring up that issue during this discussion and asked that you look at that to see if those properties.
We understand there's a difference in value on a property that's on a lake and one that isn't.
Okay.
And that's why I say indirectly. We, we measure that, that difference between the two. And keep in mind, if it's a vacant lot that's held for sale, there's the one ninety-one statute that, that tells us we have to use a present worth value of the future, I mean, it's a developer's discount essentially for those vacant lots. So those aren't setting that true market value. They're setting that a fraction of it.
And also as they value, and I understand what you're trying to say, I don't know, maybe Jack didn't, didn't hear you about, the, the properties on a lake that are new and the properties on a lake that are fifty years old. That's where you take out depreciation. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, those aren't, we don't compare the two. No.
Okay. Well, that's what I was asked to ask.
Yeah.
And, you know, then there's, there's issues with being on the lake versus behind the lake. And there's a lot of discrepancies.
And there's adjustments for that as well.
Yes.
So anyway, I've asked what I've been asked to ask. And so, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Can I just make a response to one of your comments?
Yeah.
One of the reasons that we don't, uh, we can't give any estimated adjustments at the preliminary meetings is because we take all, just for time expediency, we have, we take all, any information that that property owner has brought to us and that we have shared with them ours. After they leave, after the appointments are done, then the staff has to take those same packets and in our CAMA system, adjust all that information. And you go through the whole process again within the area to arrive at a potentially adjusted figure. So timeout, we just, there's a lot of work to do, rather than just sit there and say, "Oh, I see this, so your value's this." There's a lot involved, which is why we don't, we aren't able to give new values or new recommendations at the time of the meeting.
I know. It's just the time it's taking our taxpayers.
I agree.
I mean, a lot of them work, have to take off work. It's not convenient to come down here. So, you know, while maybe helpful, in the long run, I don't see him as helpful as a different system could be. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Like the others here today, I've heard from a lot of constituents. And I try to, um, respond individually to each constituent, taxpayer that contacts me. And so I just wanted to relay some of the information that I'm receiving. And I think that it's a two-way street in terms of communicating with you and your office to try to resolve these difficult questions. But I'm getting things, and these are specific complaints that probably will be ending up in your office. Things like Ninety-Ninth and Ontario property, which gets a two-hundred-and-ninety-nine percent, uh, land increase. Uh, a, uh, another, uh, property in, uh, the Ninety-Second Street area, South Fifty-Nine Hundred Block, a thirty-thousand-five-hundred-dollar increase one year from sale. A, uh, Seventeen Hundred Block on South Fifty-Eighth Street, thirty percent, um, land, quadrupling from fifty-four-hundred to twenty-one thousand four hundred. And all of the property combined going from a hundred to a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. Fifty-six and Leavenworth area, land going from ninety-seven-hundred to thirty-four thousand. Eighty-eighth and Drexel Circle area in Ralston, twenty-one thousand four hundred to fifty-five thousand eight hundred, or from two dollars and thirty cents a square foot to six dollars a square foot. The, uh, property near, uh, the Thirty Hundred Block on South One-hundred-and-seventy-Eighth, going from eighty-six-hundred to fifty-seven thousand seven hundred or three-hundred-and-ten percent, uh, increase. And a property on the Ten Hundred Block on South Ninety-Second, uh, with a, um, increase from, uh, the, the entire property's increasing, uh, but the, the land increased from thirty thousand to one hundred thousand. You know, people really have a difficult time getting their heads around this. And I get questions, and I don't expect you to answer them here, but we need to follow this up, home by home, property by property. I get questions like, "How can we have a new evaluation on my home without anybody coming to my home to actually do, uh, an appraisal?" And, um, is there a lack of foresight, or was there a lack of foresight at some time to allow these, uh, property values to, uh, be, I don't know, neglected for so long that, that these, uh, big increases, uh, occur? And is the, isn't there some way that we could be incremental in these increases? I mean, you know, a three-hundred percent increase on anything for anybody is, you know, severe. And certainly on our homes, which for most of us is our, our most valued asset, is really crushing. So, you know, I, I don't expect you to answer those questions here, but I'm sure you're gonna receive them, and, and we can follow up, uh, individually, because it's our job to try to do whatever we can to alleviate this problem. It's a problem. It, it's not right. We should fix it. I, I do have a couple of questions that I would like quick answers on. And my, um, constituents have primarily been residential people. Was the same process, uh, conducted on commercial properties?
Yes, the sales were reviewed on commercial properties. A different methodology is used, because typically we use an income approach on those.
Can you use a microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Okay. I, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I haven't heard a lot of commercial properties. Uh, but the, the residential properties seem to be, uh, taking the, the brunt of the increases. And, you know, I, I guess we'd like to have some balance in our assessments of properties. A lot of people wonder, and you don't have to answer this again. If I just purchased this property, or there are two or three properties very close to me, similarly located, that just sold, why isn't that purchase price applicable to the assessed value of this property? I get a lot of that from people that say, "My neighbor, or the person across the street, or my home itself, just sold. You know, we just bought it, and it was at this price." That's a pretty good indication of what the market value is, uh, the market value price. Why isn't that, you know, uh, used? And I, I think that we should look at that, because a lot of people just don't understand, I frankly am one of them, why a fair market value of an arm's length sale isn't the best yardstick of valuation in today's real estate world.
Actually, those sales are used to build a model for mass appraisal. And that's the difference between mass appraisal and fee appraisal. A fee appraiser would look at that individual sale and make adjustments because of that individual transaction. We look at a whole lot of transactions within a model area. We develop a model that predicts values based on those sale prices. And that's why you won't see us actually hit a sale price right on the head, because we're applying a model that predicts the sale price.
On the appeal process that we've talked about, and I know that you've indicated that the, uh, they can call in, they can come in, they can go on. that they can call in, they can come in, they can go online to do this, we're all interested in everybody knowing their rights of appeals as much as possible, and I know-
Knowing what, I'm sorry?
The rights to come in and-
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that.
...have that initial, you know, conversation with your office about getting something fixed. So, it would probably be helpful to all of us if we had, and I know there was information in the newspaper, I know you have it on your website, but information that we could readily give to people, I mean, I have a lot of people coming to me, and the basic information that you're giving us today, if you could relay that to us so that we could just forward it, and, you know, the emails that I get and everyone else gets, it would be nice to say, and here's, you know, the assessor's outline of step one, step two, step three, step four, what you need to do.
Of the meeting process?
Yes. What they need to do to get started on getting, you know, their hearing and get this fixed, yes.
We can just print that off the website and- We'll print that off our website and send it out to the commissioners.
That'd be great. You know, the end of the line for us is gonna be whatever we can do in the county using the powers that we have, either as assessor or as county board, Board of Equalization, I think that we're all eager to pursue. And we will work with you as closely as we can to get people aware of what their rights are to pursue that. But from now through Board of Equalization, I think that we're all committed to trying to get this fixed, because it's seriously out of whack, and I don't think 300 percent increases are justified. That includes, I mean, if we have to, as others have indicated, revisiting our own mill levy, because, you know, the properties determine the amount of tax you pay, the amount of tax determines the amount of revenue that we have, and if things are bumping up by these percentages, frankly, we don't need that revenue, and we shouldn't collect that revenue. And the way not to collect it is to adjust the mill levy, and we should revisit that very seriously as part of the entire package of adjusting this. We need to fix this, and I'm committed to work on that.
I do wanna say one thing, is that when you referenced that the whole thing is out of whack, the numbers that we're working with and the history that we were not working with, it's not that the numbers are out of whack, it's the impact of those numbers that are out of whack. The numbers speak for themselves in the calculation, so it's the impact that it has of those.
I think I understand what you're saying. What I mean is, a 300 percent tax increase is out of whack.
It's crazy.
And unjustified, and we should fix that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan, and then we'll go to citizens.
I'm just gonna say, you know, the commercial property that I mentioned along Dodge Street west of Seventy-Second, when it's in 2016, sold in 2015, it's still 100 percent less, less than half of what they paid. I wanna watch those, because even your 2017, you're still 800,000 under what the person paid for it in 2015, and yet we have all the taxpayers here with their 30 percent, 40 percent over what they paid. So, we'll do everything we can to be helpful.
Sure, and I wanna just make a comment on that, and I know we have had a few, we have had some calls for commercial properties. Yours in question, I don't know which exactly property, we don't, of course, have the information, but what I'm saying is, is that we have over, we have almost 180-some thousand residential properties, and we have the remainder, we have maybe 30,000 or 40,000 in commercial. Those numbers create the differences in the calls. Also, in commercial, when they come and visit us and we put together the valuations for commercial, unlike residential, we also have different rates and different pieces of information that are included in deriving that value. One of which is vacancy rates, one of which is, I just lost my train, in spending, the income and spending statements, all of which go into the whole process of valuing commercial, unlike residential. So, there are differences in value. I'm not saying that that's right, I'm just, in public forum, saying that there is a different methodology for valuing commercial than there is for residential. We don't ask for income, vacancy, and all that.
This was just vacant land.
Okay, I'm going to cut off the commissioner's conversation at this point, and if you have questions, write them down, and we'll come back to us at the end. But, for those that want to speak, if you could come forward and give us your name and address, and I don't know if they put a tablet there for you to write on it or not, and a pen, okay. And each citizen will be given five minutes, we'll turn the light on, if you could please abide by that. And I would also ask that, again, kind of move through as fast as you, you don't have to take the whole five minutes if you don't need it. Okay. So, go ahead and start, Doug.
Good morning, my name is Doug Kagan, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our state and county evaluation system is a festering sore that never heals. Every year, homeowners and business owners, somewhere in our state, see their valuation skyrocket, not matching market value, see larger and more elegant homes valued less than theirs, and erroneous detailed descriptions on valuation statements, and unimproved properties facing higher valuations. The formula for setting valuations and the criteria used for assessment are skewed and obsolete compared to other states and require reform. We wonder how the county board can conscientiously set its property tax levy when the valuation system is so convoluted. The valuation appeal process is both cumbersome and lengthy, tiring many who appeal year after year. Meanwhile, our legislature removes more properties from the property tax rolls. We ask the County Board of Equalization, however legally possible, to try to roll back these outrageous valuation increases. Extend the time for informal appeals. Immediately direct your lobbyists to contact state senators from Douglas County to add an amendment to one of the property tax or valuation relief bills now pending in the legislature in order to cancel these valuation hikes. Lobby our state senators to give back local control. Lobby them to eliminate the Tax Equalization Review Commission. We believe it imperative that the entire valuation system undergo complete overhauling. beleaguered homeowners are sinking deeper every year into a swamp created by elected officials who continually have ignored our pleas for property valuation reform and point fingers at each other. The time for excuses is over. As our new president has stated, it is time to drain the swamp. We invite the county assessor and the county board to join taxpayers to unite and fight for a new valuation system like progressive states have done already and precisely what Commissioner Borgeson has suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. And-
I'm just a taxpayer, my name's Dan Hibbert, I live on Eightieth and Dorcas, 6A124, and my land value went up from 17,000 to 87,000. My house was appraised a month ago at 168, they told me it's worth 217. My taxes went up 40 percent, and I had a $300 increase last year in my taxes. The system's flawed, they need to be audited, the whole system needs to be changed and audited. This gentleman spoke more eloquently than I could, but, you know, I've heard a lot of good talk from people, but this has been going on for 20 years or 30 years, even more, hasn't it?
Yeah.
And what's it gonna take to fix it? I don't know, do I need, I mean, I call down to the legislature quite often, they're tired of hearing from me, but, you know, I mean, I guess it takes somebody like you people to make the change happen, or I'll go down on the steps with you, I mean, it's wrong, it needs to be audited.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's John Hunter, I'm actually just moved, I'm in the process of selling my old home, and we just moved into a new one.
What was your last name?
John Hunter.
Hunter, thank you.
Both, well, one property, if I remember the map correctly, was in their area of three, and the other one is in their area of four. And if I remember correctly, she said the average increase, or if, like I said, if I understood correctly, was what, between six and eight percent for those two areas, which I find odd, because my property on 9133 Boyd Street, land value went from $8,300 to $50,500. The improvement did go down, but the net gain is $30,000. It went from $98,000 to 130. Now, I have no problem paying my fair share, it was undervalued at 98. However, I have had the property on the market for two months at 120, and I've had one offer for 110. So, that to me speaks that that is overvalued. My new property, which is on South Seventy Street, very nice neighborhood, but very mixed neighborhood, house across the way from me is a $300,000 house, no doubt. Mine appraised for 160. It's a two-bedroom house, still has plaster walls, hasn't been updated since the seventies, we'll call it. It was valued at 140. It appraised at 160. The land value went from 15,7 to 42,7, and the dwelling went up as well, for a total increase of $46,000 up to $186,000. For me, what that would break down to, if I'm looking at the levy and everything correct, is I'm looking at almost a three-figure increase per month on my mortgage when you include the taxes. And like I said, at that point, between the appraisal and what they assess it at, that's a $26,000 increase over what the house appraised for when I got the house. So, I understand the issues that they're working through, and I don't, I'm not trying to vilify them in any way, shape, or form, but there is obviously disconnect, and there's a problem. I totally understand that the values haven't been adjusted over time as they should, but to put it on the homeowners now who, like I said, I just moved into this house, to put on the mistake that was made for the last 10 years and not correctly evaluating the land, and then to dump it on me in one year, that's hard. And I can, I can tell, I don't make a lot of money, I have, I know a lot of people that don't make a lot of money, a three-figure increase per month on a mortgage is gonna be enough to put people out of their homes. So, we really need to focus and try to figure out how we're gonna fix this.
Thank you.
Take that appraisal when you go down.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Andrew Sullivan of 774, 7748 Western Avenue. I'm in the Peeny Park Division Association and so forth. I want, you commissioners, you have great perception of what's going on within empathy for us on this, and I appreciate that. I don't understand why I didn't receive any notification. Just send me a postcard, tell me there's been a vast evaluation of property, so I at least know what's going to happen. I had a 13 percent increase, I'm gonna be paying $300 more in taxes if no change is made in the mill levy. My house is not the standard $130,000 three-bedroom house. It's modest house, one-car garage, no master bathroom, and many of my neighbors have houses that are less expensive, under $100,000. The houses don't have basements, some of them have just a one-car garage, some have no garage. And that's typical of that particular area. All those homes in those area were hit with at least a $13,000 increase. So, for many of them, this is a 20 percent increase in tax on there if nothing is done. This forces a perversion in the land. It forces people to do things to the property on there, either, one, once they, they'll vacate, rent it out, 'cause it's cheaper, it's more, it's a better way to make money off of it. Or, they'll do what a lot of people do. In these smaller homes, that third bedroom is kinda sketchy. It's rather small, and what a lot of people do is if you flip out the big window with a smaller window, all of a sudden, it's no longer a bedroom, and then you get reevaluated downward. There's several houses in the area that I live in, and they have done just that. There's another aspect that I wanna point out about the Coal Creek Basin, and this is probably a larger topic at a different time, but Coal Creek was never properly developed or tiled. You'll notice that some of the creeks in, throughout many of the parts in Douglas County were tiled under, or banked, or so forth, like a little papillion and so forth. Coal Creek never really developed properly on that, and there was property owners that have been flooded out in the area, and the city and the NRD and the Douglas County and federal government officials and federal funds and all sorts of stuff have been removing houses away from the creek bed, and leaving empty lots behind that nothing's been done with. So, where it looks like derelict property throughout the area. So, on top of it, I don't know how the land increased in value, because there's, all this odd allotments that can't be used, and at the same time, if you keep raising the property taxes, you just force some developer to say, "No one can live for to live there anymore, they'll take two small houses, destroy them, and build a bigger house." That's what she's mentioned in her own presentation. But that's the result of the rising property tax on it, because you can't just tell someone that makes $25,000 a year, is paying a mortgage on there, and they get hit with a 20 percent increase in their property tax on it, that it's gonna hurt them. And for many of us, some of us that have already owned our home, the biggest paycheck we put out, the biggest check we write, is the property tax bill. And I think people forget that. Anyways, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rich Seniker, and I'm here to represent the Ginger Cove Homeowners Association. But before I do that, I would like to just maybe emphasize a point, make a point, that Commissioner Kraft made beginning. If I were in business and I provided services to one of you, let's say I provided to Commissioner Morgan, and I represented your largest bill of the year, and we agreed that you'd pay me annually, okay? And you've been a customer of mine for many, many years, and then one day you get your bill, and it's increased by 35 percent, okay? And you call me up and you raise heck with me, right?
Yes.
And I say, "PJ, I posted it on the website back in January." I mean, that's what's going on here, I mean, that's not, that's not business in bad faith, first of all, and I think Commissioner Kraft hit it, hit the nail right on the head. But I'm here to represent Ginger Cove, my name is Rich Seniker, I've got several of my neighbors here, whoever's from Ginger Cove, if you stand or raise your hand, I'd appreciate it. And there was a comment made earlier about lakes, and are we getting, you know, thrown in with the large lakes? And I think it does appear that our 50-year-old subdivision, which the majority of the lots sit in the floodplain at Ginger Cove, are absolutely being thrown in with the new luxury subdivisions that are being built around us. In Ginger Cove, there are 161 homes, and again, the majority of those lots are in the floodplain, and many people may not know this, but we also have to pay leases. That property is leased back to the Lamp family, you probably know that family in Omaha, and the leases are substantial, and the economic burden of those leases impact our ability to sell our houses, because they can move to another lake and not have to pay for the leases. And if you look at Ginger Cove, all parcels received increases, the average increase overall is around 35 percent, but 90 percent of the 161 lots, the land value increased from between 200 percent to over 300 percent. 90 percent of the lots around there. One parcel went, the land value went from 58,000 to 195,000. Never been a lot sold for that much at Ginger Cove, ever. It's not, it's not happened. So, that's our situation we're in, and I could, I've got some more notes here, but I won't go through those, because a lot of the things have been said today already. But we appreciate your support, and something does need to change, because the process is clearly broken. I know many other people across Omaha that were part of the equalization effort, and they all got the increases last year, now on top of it, they're getting 20 percent more. How can you give a 20 percent increase when it was just quote-unquote "equalized" last year? The values aren't going up that much, so the process is clearly broken. Thank you for your time, and I've grown, after coming to the meeting today, I've got a great appreciation for what you all do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, I have a little bit of a voice problem, so bear with me. I happen to fall, if you remember in this-
Did you give me your name and-
I'm sorry, my name is Keith Schroeder. I lived in the section, or I live in the section five, if you remember on the map, out in very west Omaha. I was hit with an 80 percent increase in taxes, 80 percent. I have a re-plot lot that's adjacent to my property that puts up against the street, that is 50-foot deep, unbuildable lot. That valuation went from 1,000 to $83,000. $83,000.
Unbuildable.
Unbuildable, you cannot build on this lot. Would you like it? I'll donate it to you guys if I can get away from this, and you can maintain it. I don't understand- I, I, I don't understand this. And what scares me is, I live right across from the new development at two-hundred-twenty-second F Street. They're planning on building four hundred homes, assuming some people will build, or, you know, wanna build now with this tax situation. I doubt it. But if they do, what is that, is that just gonna raise my prac- taxes even more when these high-dollar homes come into play? My home is thirty years old. I have not done anything to it. It's up eighty percent. Something's gotta change. This, this is, this is ridiculous. And I drove through other areas around. I know a house, and I'm not gonna say which one it is. Completely updated. New exterior, new interior, the lot, the whole, his property taxes went down. I don't understand this.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Make, make sure you call me if that unbuildable lot doesn't get changed, or Commissioner Boyle, one of us will handle that.
Thank you.
Unbeliev-
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mary Jane Trumper. I live at fifty-three oh-six Isard Street. I'm a residential realtor, and I'm also president of Omaha Liberty Ladies. My tax valuation in Dundee went up over twenty percent since two thousand and fifteen. Uh, I agree with what Commissioner Kraft said, especially in older neighborhoods, everything is about condition of the houses. You cannot make blanket statements about values of houses. The older the neighborhood is, the harder it is, and block to block, within a block, it can make a difference. Uh, I still personally have a nineteen-sixties kitchen. I think I'm a good steward of, of old houses. I've always renovated old houses, and, but I like old kitchens, and so I've kept it, uh, but that's gonna affect how I resell. Um, I would like to say that, and remind everybody, that these property taxes are a regressive tax. They hurt people that rent, and they hurt poorer people harder than they hurt people that have a good income. And we need to keep, uh, that in mind. I think Diane Bodyotto inherited a mess. And then that leads to the question, who's overseeing all of this? Who's overseeing what the assessor is doing? And if we don't have some oversight, we need to get it, uh, so that we don't get into these messes again. Uh, as Doug Kagan said, we have forty-nine other states that have methods of property taxation. I know in Georgia, when I lived there, that you did not, uh, do your tax rate based on a hundred percent of valuation. You did it on a proportion of that. The state would determine what proportion, whether it was eighty percent, sixty percent valuation, not the hundred percent of the valuation. There's many, many ways of doing it, and I can say, probably all forty-nine of them are better than what we're doing now. Um, I agree with Commissioner Morgan about the commercial businesses. That is also a concern of mine. I know when HDR was buying, uh, talking about buying property in downtown Omaha, uh, for the project down there, they were gonna offer ten million dollars, and I don't think the property was assessed for ten percent of that. Yet, for our agricultural land, we treat it like residential, but we have some other magic way that we figure out these commercial properties, and I think we need to have a little bit more fairness. Probably, um, Commissioner Duda can speak to that, but I, I think that they, they get a, a bad deal, because those are businesses. Um, that also brings into mind TIF financing, which we haven't brought up, and all the properties that are taken off of the tax rolls that we're not getting, and that, that is shouldered by our citizens. To what Diane Bodyotto had said about the tax rate, I know that Douglas County is only a small percentage of the tax that comes out on that property tax bill. Learning community is huge, huge amount. There's no bill in the legislature this year about bringing the learning community, uh, into some sort of reasonableness about their taxation, or about what we're getting for that tax money. I will give out a shout-out to Mayor Stothard in that, I think she's the only one I know of that has ever lowered a tax rate from any taxing entity since I've lived here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but she's done it twice. I think it should've been more, wished it had been, but I give her kudos for at least she did something about it. And then, um, I have two things to ask, because I know that there's a limit to what you can do as a, a county board, but I would ask that you show, by lowering, voluntarily lowering the tax rate, show that you are cognizant of what this, uh, is doing to taxpayers. And the second thing would be to support Senator Brewer's property tax moratorium that he introduced, LB five-seven-six. It's a two-year moratorium on increases in property tax. And that would give us two years to try to fix this mess, figure out what's wrong, and bring some relief to the people that are just overburdened, including me. Thank you.
Brewer. Thank you, Mary Jane.
Excuse me.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Pam Curry, and I live at seventy-eight-ten Seward Street in the Peony Park area. And I came because I was concerned about my, my tax going up. I'm retired six years from Child Protective Services, so I have made this community my home. I've raised two children here. They are out and doing well, uh, thanks to Westside and, and our wonderful community. And I think, I just wanna say, um, I think you guys have done a beautiful job here today, and it's kinda hard to impress me, so, well done.
Thank you.
This is a great community, and when our taxes go up the way they are going up, people are going to be exiting. My six years has been, being the social worker for my block, half of the twelve families that live there are retired, are on fixed incomes. This, you know, this is like the ghetto of Westside, guys, and so we didn't have a lot of money coming in here. I have a one-car garage, um, and I do a lot of gardening, and I do a lot of networking with my neighborhood. That, uh, website that we have is just livid with being angry about this stuff. And we have so much anger in our neighborhood, in our community, in our nation, and that anger needs to be brought down. And so, I'm talking, and I'm suggesting, and I'll go back and I'll tell everybody about how wonderful you were today, and that I really trust that this bad, broken system is gonna get fixed. And I'll make my little appointment to talk about my property. So, thank you very much.
What was your increase, ma'am?
What was your increase? She, Mary-
Um, went from, the property went from sixty-eight to twenty.
Now wait.
Thirteen thousand dollars.
So it'd be at twenty percent? It was sixty-eight before, it ended up at eighty-one? So it-
It's been that way since twenty-twelve unless she had paid.
So twenty percent?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Michael Moran. I live at one-thirty-nine oh-nine Charles Street. My block, although it, it was bounded on one end, but there's fourteen houses on my block, seven on each side. Hundred-and-thirty-eighth is on one end, and Hundred-and-forty-first Avenue is on the other end. My taxes have gone up almost twenty-six percent in the last two years. Uh, from last year to this year, it went up a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in my, in my valuation. That was slightly, and out of that, a hundred thousand of that was improvements, although I've not made improvements to my house. I protested my two thousand and sixteen taxes. I had a meeting, and so in August of last year, they determined that my house was as they had proposed it was valued. So miraculously, in the succeeding five months, my house somehow, although, although no, no improvements made, they didn't discover oil on my land, anything like that, it's gone up a hundred thousand dollars. Now, in the last eighteen months, there have been four sales on my block, and I'm talking about my fourteen houses. In the last fourteen months, uh, three of those have occurred in the last fourteen months, the most recent one is five months ago. If you go back to two years that they were talking about there, there've been six sales on my block. The ran, the, the square footage of the houses on my block are relatively close. Uh, some houses have, a couple houses have swimming pools. But the lowest selling price out of that sales, the lowest selling price, my, my valuation is two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand more than that sale, or forty-six percent. The low, the highest sales price is a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, or twenty-one percent above that. Again, they talk about market value, the, the assessor described how it's supposed to be a situation of, you know, uh, she said, the most probable price that a willing buyer would pay to a willing seller. Uh, I think that, and, and I brought some of these figures up last year in my protest, and they, I, I lost the protest. I have appealed it to the state, because I, I'm willing to pay my fair share, but I'm not going to be hijacked by, uh, these types of situations. I asked the assessor I met with last year, he was trying to give me figures. Where I live, within a couple blocks away is a, is a section of houses that there's not one of them under a million dollars, and the most one is maybe four or five million dollars. I suspect, uh, this black box of their model would draw them, those houses into mine, uh, calculation, which is unfair. As, as Mr. Mor- Commissioner Morgan would say in the real estate business, people looking in my price range are not looking at million-dollar houses. So why should those sales impact my value? Uh, again, I just wanna be fair. I wanna be fair about this situation. Uh, I, it's, the way I calculate it now with the current levy, uh, I'm gonna pay two hundred dollars a month more in property taxes, uh, and, and I just think it's outrageous. The system is broken, and I could not persuade the assessor's office examiner last year, using much of these sales figures, why are you, why is, can't you in fact, uh, raise my, or adjust mine accordingly? I lost my appeal, my next-door neighbor lost their appeal, but six other houses on my block, again, the fourteen, appealed and were successful using the same information, and that's what I'm gonna present when I go to the state. But again, I gotta file this to the state, I gotta go to Lincoln, I gotta meet with them. My brother says, uh, it's a Watt meeting, which is a waste of time, but I'm gonna do it anyway. So, uh, thank you for your time, and I, I just think it's outrageous. I mean, I hear the story, it's a situation where, uh, you know, since they looked at my property in August, this is not, can't be a situation where, well, we haven't examined it in years, because obviously in August, they knew what one value is, and now all of a sudden, they suggest that in five months, my property value has gone up a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and that's outrageous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's, uh, Georgia Walsh-Konan. Um, I live in Keystone, thirty-seven twenty-three North Seventy-Ninth Street. Um, and thank you to our press for at least making this an issue and, uh, giving us a heads-up, because we wouldn't have looked otherwise. Uh, when I did get on the website, my husband and I spent some time looking at the map in our neighborhood, um, and just for your information, um, it's not equal. The land value is what everybody's talked about today for the most part, and that's really not even at all in our neighborhood. Right next door to me, um, on a property that has double, more than double the land that we do, their land's, um, value went down, seven hundred dollars. Ours went up fifty-eight hundred, and on the north side of us, a house that had equal property, slightly different but very, very similar, also went up fifty-five hundred. Again, ours is smaller than theirs, and it went up more. Um, the one thing that wasn't addressed here, and, and I'm very curious about it, so I'm sorry that they're not here to answer the question, is how they're assessing the improvements to the property, because that's where we're really getting stuck. Um, they have given us an improvement on our home of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars this year. Uh, we even put on a roof, but that's maintenance, and everybody in our neighborhood after the hailstorm put on new roofs. Um, there's been no addition, there's nothing changed. So I don't know where they're coming up with that. That means our increase is sixty-five thousand dollars in the cost of our home. If you get on Zillow, you know, a generous estimate is a, is a two-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar price tag, not a two-hundred-and-fifty-one-one. Um, these kind of anomalies, when I'm looking at the map just in a small area in my neighborhood, raise red flags for me. It makes me wonder, again, where the oversight is, and how you can send out these preliminary assessments and not notice that there's this much, uh, diversity and lack of equity. Thank you.
Thank you. And the assessors are still here, listening to all of you.
Um, my, yes, my name is Tanya Cooper, and I represent OIC Neighborhood Association. And so, um, I'm here because, uh, we had, um, one in the opposite direction, um, a lowering, but, uh, much to what this young, the last young lady said, I would like to know how they were assessing the, the, the improvements. Because one of the problems in our area was we have a lot of vacancies in our area. And, um, just on the street that I live on, I have two vacancies that I've actually, um, complained about. One of them, they have the person's, um, na- name, well, the, the, you know, the placard where you have to call about the house, because that's who the person, person belonged to, it was in Memphis or whatever. I called that place. They said that they had reassigned this particular house that actually belonged to a lady that raised me when I was growing up, um, back over to the city. The houses, you, is, is, you cannot repair this house, it's just, it totally needs to be condemned. Um, the roof is pretty much gone, everything's gone, everything's, the house is, looks like it's been stripped or whatever. But when you look at it on the county assessor's website, it tells you all these improvements have been done on it all, over these years. And it's impossible that there have been any improvements to this house whatsoever. And the, the person that I spoke to, they said, no, we've never done any improvements on that house, and as a matter of fact, we have actually signed, this house has been signed back over to the city, so we don't even own it, the city actually owns it. So when I call about the house, there's, there's, um, there's problems with who owns the house, and all this kinda stuff, but the city comes and cuts the lot, you know, all, uh, every, every, you know, in the summertime, every, you know, when we complain about it, they call, they come and they cut it, whatever, all this kinds of things. But my, another problem that I'm having is the timing of the, um, the increases. They don't benefit the people that are actually selling the property. So, just to give you an example of what I'm saying. So say an old lady has a lot that's next to her home. She sells, she sells it to the city for whatever reason, and it's three hundred dollars when she sells it, and then a few days later, it's twenty-two thousand dollars on Zillow. 'Cause I spend, I'm bored, so I send off, spend all day, I'll sit in the bed on Sunday, and I'll just look at property in my area on Zillow, 'cause I'm just interested in what the houses are going for. And I'm like, but that's weird, 'cause that, that sold for three hundred and something dollars, and that, now it's twenty-two thousand dollars. That makes no sense to me. And now there's like a piece of land that you can't even put anything on, that's now twenty-two thousand dollars, and it's just a lot. You can't even, it's not even enough room to put anything on it. So these types of things, I'm sorry, but there, there needs to be, that lady, yes, she probably inherited a mess, but that place needs to be audited, because you cannot have land that you can't even put anything on, whether it's commercial, or whether it's residential, that, that sells like that. And I feel like if, if, if the land was sold from, from the old person for three hundred, and all she made was three hundred, it's benefiting the people who are coming in after her. And it's, and it's, and it's actually, you ca- a person that is in the area can't even go back in and afford that area if they wanted to build a garden, or, you know, something as simple as, just as simple as a garden, you know, let alone buy that land if they wanted to put a house on it. They wouldn't even be able to afford that, because that's not the type of, you know, revenue that people have in the OIC and Twenty-Fourth Street corridor area. It, it's something else that is amiss here, and it needs to be looked at. So thank you very much for your time, and you have a great day.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ed Koch. I, uh, live on thirty-five sixteen South one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth Avenue. Uh, everybody talks about the rates and the percentages, and nobody looks at the total picture. I bought a house here when I moved to Nebraska in nineteen-eighty-eight, still live in that house. I paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that house. I have paid approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in real estate taxes on that house thus far. Something's wrong here. I mean, we understand, now we're gonna be able to pay a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, because we're gonna raise it. You know, this is really unusual. If it wasn't for grandchildren, I probably would no longer be in this state. And I think there's a lot of us older folks that would go that route. In fact, I may get rid of the grandkids and just move anyway. Might be cheaper. I understand. They're out of their will anyway, they're not behaving themselves. No, this is, it's the big picture too. We, I spent as much on taxes as I did to purchase the house. Yes, the house is worth more now. I understand that. But any money I make on it has been eaten up by every bit of taxes I've paid over the last twenty-nine years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Renee Oltman. I live on Band Camp Drive in the six-eight-one-three-zero area code, or zip code, sorry. Um, my, my appraisal went up fifty-five thousand dollars in our neighborhood. I do live in a, a, what I feel is a nice neighborhood, but our neighborhood is also cut in between Millard and Elkhorn. Millard and Elkhorn. My son's not allowed to go to a school that's three blocks from me because it's Elkhorn, but I'm paying taxes based on market values in the Elkhorn neighborhood. My other problem is, I feel targeted with the assessor. My husband and I moved into our home in 2009. I have fought my taxes 2010, 11, 12, 13, and 14, to the point where I had to take it to Turk. And then an assessor actually came out, took pictures of my house, and gave me a lower assessed value than what I was requesting because of how they come out and evaluated it. I don't feel that I, if you look at other people in the city, there's sometimes, there's five plus years they haven't even changed. One of them, I recently researched, because I get so irritated every year when this comes out, all my family, friends, coworkers, they come to me when they have to fight their taxes because I'm so used to it. That's pathetic, actually. But, so I looked up some workers that currently work in the office. One mother, her taxes haven't been raised in over six years. I find a problem with that. That's ethical problem that I would like researched and audited. There's other city leaders also, where their home improvements went down, mine went up. What's driving that home improvement? I haven't improved my home. If anything, my son's tore up my backyard to give me less of an improvement with his friends playing football. But these are just some concerns I have that I'd like you guys to look into for ethical purposes and for all the taxpayers. But I don't feel that I should have to fight my taxes every year. Thank you.
Good morning.
Mary Ann.
How are you?
Doing fine. Commissioners? Which one of these is hot?
I want you to have your hand on it. There you go.
All right, how's that? Good? You guys got a lot of work to do. This room is full of a lot of highly smart, intelligent people. I've been sitting here this morning, when the place opened up, listening to people from all different walks of life and whatnot. And I want to thank Diane for not raising my rent too much. You guys had a, participated in that, but my rent only went up $14 a year, because we rent a house from the county. You know, it's a unique setup, but some of you people may qualify for that, and some of you may not. But just, I'm going to shift gears here for a second. We just had an election, you know, with a new president. And he spoke the other day about the issues and problems we have, and I listened to Pete Rickett speak the other day in Fremont, asked him some questions, and it's one of the first things Pete said, and so did Trump. You know, we need to curtail the spending, the spending. We need to do that. I've been in this community since 1967, and I've seen a lot of changes. Some it's been good, some hasn't been so good. But you guys and ladies, you know, have a heck of a job to do here. The public out here can only afford about so much here. That was touched on today, about budgets, people's budgets. You know, eventually, there's not any place to grab money. Now, we want Omaha to grow, we want Nebraska to grow, well, we're being taxed to death, you know, and you guys can relate to that, you've heard this over and over and over again. But if you need some help out here, guys, there's a lot of people in the public that stay home and they watch Dancing With The Stars, Jeopardy, and all these things here. They're highly intelligent people. You know, you guys can call them or go around the neighborhood that you guys represent and say, say, can you help us? You know, because this system we've got right now that our county assessor is using, that's broken, that's so dysfunctional, it's pathetic. That's been brought up by a lot of you people today here. But I want to thank you for your time, have a great day, and we've got a lot of work to do. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Haley Peters, I reside at 3114 South 217th Street, zip 68022. Thank you for your time and all your questions today that you've done, I think has been really informative as a member of your community. We moved into the area this summer, back to Nebraska actually, from Texas where they do have a 5% cap. And I wanted to ask about how we can find out if a neighborhood gets reselected for evaluation, because it seems like it would be worthwhile, rather than everybody spending all their individual time. I'm in a neighborhood that the land value increased by 37%. Our actual property increased by 58% on the land. And so for us, our total evaluation increased by $196,600. There's a neighborhood ensconced within ours, Trail Ridge Ranches is ours, and is Terre Linda within. The land prices went up 5.89 fold. So, an average lot price of $12.65,000 to $73,000. And that's a 13 neighborhood, it's closed off, there are no new constructions. We're near 204th and Center, near a lot of new developments, but we're on the outskirts, so we're still surrounded by cornfields. So I suspect that perhaps our neighborhood was incorrectly evaluated, do do a lot of new construction nearby, and I would like to know how to start that process. So if that could be posted on a website or something, that would be really beneficial.
Thank you. And I would make your appointment for your informal hearing to find out those answers that you've just asked us, that would be most helpful.
Yeah.
Can I ask one quick thing? Is that all right? You just moved in there in the last six, eight months?
Yeah.
And you don't have to answer, but is the value that they've assessed at the total value close to what you paid, or is it 20% more, or what?
It's close but above, and we moved from a training period down in Texas. And so, we were on a tight schedule and had two kids, we bought the home without ever looking at it. It was one of those just get it done kind of situations. So I would say that we overpaid for them.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Jeff.
Good morning. Jeff Stevens, 14518 Webster Circle, and I'm the Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom County Watch volunteer. I'm normally here in front of you advocating for reducing the scope and the cost of government, but today, this is really an issue about the absence of good government. The government at the state and the county level has failed the public in this issue, and both have failed you as the Board of Equalization and county commissioners when such extreme uncertainty in individual and aggregate valuations, that you need to make your decisions about taxes. And these decisions need to be both equitable to property owners, and need to be appropriate to support the county budget. And in your position, I certainly appreciate that difficult task this year. But as a taxpayer and citizen, I need to inform you when some part of this necessary evil that we call government has become intolerable. And if I may continue in the vein of Thomas Paine, my calamity is heightened by knowing that with our tax dollars, we provide the very means by which we suffer. So I implore you to address this problem, and with your fellow county officials and staff, to fix the problem as you can at the county level. I implore you to lobby with us and on our behalf at the Unicameral, for there are simpler and more direct methods in the Unicameral right now of addressing this issue, and I fear that they are less, they're less refined perhaps, they have less dexterity and cooperate with less finesse to solve this problem than you folks can, that have the day-to-day operational knowledge of what you need to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good morning.
My name is Rick Marasko, I live at 167th and Pasadena Plaza. And early last Friday morning, after watching the news, decided to get on the website and see what was going on with my evaluation. So in 2000, from 2015 to 2016, my lot evaluation went from 87,200 to 93,300. So early Friday morning, I got up, and I got on the computer at 8 o'clock in the morning, and now my evaluation for my lot is 292,000. So overnight, also, my home value went up 127,000 in seven hours. Just a little bit about myself, I'm a new construction home builder, I know what houses sell for, I know what lots sell for. And one thing that I don't think is ever taken into account, they have isolated incidents where somebody will go down and knock down a house in an older neighborhood, and decide to build a bigger house on there. Should not punish the other people who are still living there unless someday they sell that house and somebody else builds on it, and then reassess the valuation. So, an empty lot is always worth more than a lot that has a house on it, because there's expense to knock the house down, and there's different things that go along with that. So, just trying to figure out how my evaluation went up so much. And I have a neighbor across the street, his lot went down 55,000, when mine went up 200. And another person that lives behind us, they say I have a lake view, which I don't, I live two blocks from Zerinski Lake, and there's nothing but trees behind my house, which I like. But there's no lake view, but that's part of my attribute for part of my taxes. And on the other side of the lake, where they have a lake view, their taxes went, total went down 126,000. So there's some huge discrepancies. And the thing that bothers me most about these evaluations, it's someone's opinion about what your value is worth, and then you as a homeowner have to go through a long and lengthy process to try to prove that they're wrong. And a lot of people don't like to admit it when they're wrong. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Rick.
I have to switch to good afternoon now.
That's right.
Claire looked at me the last time.
I won't keep you from your lunch.
Oh, no, you just go right ahead.
Merrily Hanson, I'm at about 108th and Pacific Street area. But what we'd really like to know is, obviously, this isn't your fault, and we appreciate everything you've said today. We'd like to know who to contact in Lincoln, and when to march on the Capitol, and how to get that organized.
Your state, I would start with your state senators.
Okay.
And I can tell you that they're very much aware of what's going on, because I have received calls, so.
Are they amenable to us? Are they trying to use us to cover their shortfall?
Oh, no, 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 no. And that is one thing I do want to make a statement about, because I've been asked about it, and that is, that certain folks or certain jurisdictions went and asked the assessor to do this, to help us out with additional revenue. That is not true. Nor did the state come and tell the assessor to raise these so that they could get, so no, that is not what this is about. So I would start with your state senators, they're very interested during this, and just stay in contact now with us. As we go down and work with the assessor and the tax administrator, we'll see what we can do together.
Yeah, thank you very much for all your help, it's enlightening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens? Yes? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time this morning and this afternoon. I just wanted to make one comment regarding what Ms. Bodyotto said earlier.
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Matthew Dill. I live in the 90th and Dodge area, 68114. She presented some information regarding sales price and the previously years assessed values from 2016, and now from 2017, and the discrepancies between the values. I did, you know, I work, I didn't have a ton of time this morning to spend on this, but I did a couple of quick searches using NP Dodge's website, they get a plug. And I looked at prices in our area for homes that are for sale, and I compared the values that are listed for the house, and then what the county's value for their, the valuation for 2017 is. And just like her, you know, anecdotal information, I'm able to find the same type of anecdotal information, just in the opposite regard. So there's a house, and I apologize if I'm using your house, 9402 Pacific Street, pending sale at $850,000, that's the listing price, not the actual sale price, it is pending. County valuation, $927,000. 9742 Brentwood, on the market for $500,000, has not sold at that price and is not pending sale. County valuation, $653,100. 60, I'm sorry, 630 South 90th, on the market for $310,000, has not sold at that price. County valuation, $433,500. And again, I'm just, I've had this argument before, I know Mark Goodwillie and I have discussed this in the past, that, you know, when we bought our house, what the current market price was, to me, was the single salient point regarding the actual value of the house. That, he explained it to me, I understood it, didn't agree with it, but did understand it, how they value the price. And I understand that when they apply a model to a large population set, that the model fails in certain situations. Unfortunately, I think what happens in this case is that the model is failing dramatically, and not just in small, isolated sets. It's failing almost exclusively, you know, almost across the board. When you say, these values apply to all these properties, that is not true. I just wanted to get my voice on record, so I think, so my boss knows I was actually here.
Thank you.
Take that for what it's worth, thank you.
Appreciate. We do, is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners? We do have a couple of lights on, Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to re-announce to anybody watching that you can watch a replay of the entire meeting on our YouTube Nebraska channel, I'm sorry, Douglas County, Nebraska channel. And you got to put Nebraska in, because there's many Douglas counties. You can also view our previous meetings. Now, in reference to the cost of mailing, it should cost, from my calculations, no more than $165,000 for every homeowner to get a postcard. But, if there's no change, we shouldn't have to send a postcard. Now, I'm sorry, not a postcard, a letter, using a mailing house, judging by what it cost when I ran my campaign. $165,000. Now, I know that's a lot of money. But, time alone that's being used, both in the assessor's office, our staff office, and your time, is probably worth that much. Now, if you just send a postcard, it should be $130,000 or less. So, and that's at the new 49 cents, but I'm doing comprehensive mailing, a, oh shoot, mass mailing, whatever they call that. Okay. Now, in defense of Diane and our previous assessor, it is my opinion that we have never adequately funded the assessor's office. I, we have two conflicting things. You want the job done right, we want the job done right, but we don't want to pay for it. Now, Roger Morrissey always said, I need more assessors, appraisers, to do the job right, to meet the state's mandates and guidelines. But the commissioner, and I've advocated to fund this department, but then we have the, don't tax me, aspect of it, don't increase our taxes. Well, the county runs a very, very tight budget. And the Nebraska Taxpayers Group have been at our budget meetings, there is no fat on the bone. We could do so much more, but we are not a wasteful entity. The, I would like to thank each and every one of you who's come today, or those who've sat in front of their television and watched today. Every commissioner knows that this process is a terrible burden on you. It's an inconvenience, it's cumbersome. And we have lobbied in front of the state, every year since I've been here, I believe, yeah, Mary Ann shaking her head, yes, for changes in the way the state mandates that we do this. We need our angry citizens to go to not just their state senator, but every state senator, and say, this system has to be made right. It has to be made easier. It has to be made justifiable. Now, one gentleman, his first name was Ed, I couldn't quite hear his last name, said he's paid twice as much in taxes on his house as he paid for the house. I've paid more than three times, and it does hurt. As I said, As I said, one of my properties went up three-hundred percent. That hurts. Diane, may I suggest, and you don't have to come to the podium, but that whenever there's a change of ten or twelve percent, you know, some arbitrary number, but that's not quite getting to the extreme, that whenever there's a change of ten or twelve percent, or whatever you determine, that an actual appraiser go out and do a visual inspection of the property. Because some of these properties that I've gone past and seen the huge increases, it'd be extremely obvious that it's not worth what the huge increase is. I believe that's all I wanted to... Oh, and did I say citizen engagement? Thank you all. Yes, I did, didn't I?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to ask our Marcos, our guy who monitors legislation, just so you know, we're already trying to do to get this under control. We are spectators, unfortunately. We just, we are really in the back of the bus, and as we go over the cliff. We have no control over what we're mandated to do, but I'd like to ask Marcos to briefly summary, summarize what we have been trying to do with our lobbyists in other counties, for that matter. Marcos?
Commissioner Marcos S. Martin, Douglas County Labor and Legislation. I guess really briefly, the way, as a summary, what's going on down in Lincoln right now. As far as bills that have been proposed that would change the Turk statutes overall that we're watching, and some of them have been, some of the language has been from suggestions coming from the Douglas County Board. We are looking at L.B. three-twenty-two, that's being proposed by Senator Craighead. We are also watching L.B. three-eight-five, that is proposed by Senator Lindstrom, and then also L.B. seventeen, that's also Senator Craighead. So, those are the three bills that, I mean, I encourage the public to look at, as far as regarding Turk, and we are watching those.
Thank you. And I want to also suggest something. Today just proves that. I wish everybody who was here earlier was still here, but something that I've suggested for a long time, that usually draws a lot of laughter, is that I think the people who should be determining the value of your homes should be you. I'd like to reverse the situation so that we don't make the taxpayers come down and try to prove to us what your value is. I think what ought to happen is, we ought to shift it. You ought to tell us what your house is worth, what your residence is worth. And then, if there's somebody in your neighborhood, when the average is two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, and somebody comes up with ninety-eight thousand, we'll knock on the door and say, "Wait a minute. We think maybe you're out of line." But, leave the other people alone. I just think it's really, this is not the first time we've had to have you dragged down here to protest this. I think it should be reversed. I think, too, that one, if that isn't acceptable, sending everybody a postcard and saying, "Tell us what your house is worth," that'd be an interesting response, but still, I think it'd be worth it. If that isn't acceptable, then I think what we ought to do is go to the Omaha Area Board of Realtors and say, "We would like realtors who know neighborhoods, who know prices, to go through neighborhoods, and you do the assessing. Have the real estate, real estate people do it. Who knows outside of you better than what a home should be selling for?" And frankly, this whole idea of having land separate from the improvement is very bizarre, unless you are... The first thing that hit me when someone called me first, I said, "Well, are you in a neighborhood where, you know, the lot had skyrocketed? Are you in a neighborhood where possibly your home is going to be torn down, and somebody might buy the lot?" And, "No." So, we have all these homes, and I've got some that are just amazing, what's happened, just like the stories today. So, I think what we ought to do is, let's just forget about the land, let's just do the improvement, and try to come up with something that's fair and equitable. And again, you know your homes best, but second, if that's not going to work, then I think we ought to hire the real estate professionals to go through neighborhoods and start from there. Turk is a really bizarre outfit. Many times, their ability to answer complaints, I mean, sometimes they drag on two years, sometimes even three, so you have, they have multiple complaints piling up. The other thing they do that really offends me is that I was told by the previous assessor that they want to come into your home and see it. And I don't like that. I mean, I think your home is your castle, and, you know, but the trouble is, Turk says, "Well, we didn't see the inside of your house, so, you know, you're out of luck." Plus, if you don't have an attorney, and being an attorney, I'd love to have all the attorneys down there, but if you don't have an attorney, you are really out of luck, because you're there by yourself, and they just don't seem to respect the citizens who come in. I don't mean to be so critical of them, but they have been a total disaster in my book. So, there are some changes. Look at those bills that are for, up three-twenty-two, three-eight-five, and seventeen. And encourage, I think Senator McColister has something down there, too. Change is coming. Let the senators know how frustrated you are, and hopefully, some things will be changed. And I want to thank all of you for coming. I think it's remarkable, and your patience and your courtesy to us, the folks who are riding in the back of the bus as we go over the cliff. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I want to echo some of what Mike said, but I think the last gentleman that spoke was very good information. He gave us a lot of prices. You talked about the realtors helping, and I think we need all the help we can get. And none of us on this board, I don't believe, I know Mary Ann Borgeson, you as chairperson, Mark, myself, we didn't have any prior knowledge of this till we started getting your calls, and we want to thank you for those calls. Because it was totally a shock when we heard some of, you know, these increases and so on. But I think the last gentleman, bringing out what homes were listed for, and how much more, thirty percent, forty percent more than what they're listed for, and they haven't sold, are now assessed for that amount. That's great information from you, for our assessor who's listening to here, and I understood you to say you're a friend of Mr. Goodwilly's, or talk to him often. You know, that's the kind of information, and I know that the assessor also brought us information of what homes are listed for, and believe me, what they're listed for and what they sell for isn't the same number. And the other thing, I think, is when you put them even at that hundred percent, you have to consider, there are some other factors put into that, the Real Estate Commission and so on. That's why they have the ninety-two percent to a hundred percent. But I think we really got to continue to be involved, and I hope in the future, I think it's a positive for us, and maybe all of you won't agree with this, but I would have liked the assessor's office to have talked to us and say, "Hey, here's the discrepancies we're finding. Here's what's possibly going to be happening." We might have done what Commissioner Kraft said, and said, "I think we need to put out some cards on this to people, showing they're going to have," as Rick Marasco came down here, "a hundred percent increase, almost, in the value of his home from one year to the next, and ask some questions, and put out a card to people, so they're not just looking it up." Because I know there's still a lot of people out there that have not, and I appreciate the media being here, they're not aware that they're going to have a twenty or thirty percent increase. I'm confident of that.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'll stop, and I thank you, Commissioner Borgeson, for allowing, and especially the people that came down here and sat through this. We've got a rest of an agenda. We don't leave after this. But, we really, really thank you for being here. And the other thing is, I emailed out a lot of people my cell number. We want to hear from you, and we want to hear from you again of how it goes in the future. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and I believe this will be my last comment on the subject. All of our committee meetings are open to the public, including all of our board meetings. We invited you to come to our finance committee meetings. Commissioner, are you still on the committee?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Commissioner P.J. Morgan are on that and chair that committee. We published them. You can find them on our website. I don't know when the next one is. Do you have a tentative date?
No.
Okay. But you're invited to come for the finance committee's meetings, to see how tight we are with our dollars. Now, we cannot control what the various elected officials spent. We, as Commissioner Boyle said, we were sued years ago by six different elected officials, and we lost, because we didn't give them the money they wanted. So, bear that in mind, and thank you.
No other lights from commissioners? I do want to thank the assessor's office for being accommodating to us to come and explain. It's real helpful, actually, what you gave us, and that map and the numbers, that's very helpful, not only to us as a board to understand, so that we can help our taxpayers with you, but for them to know. So, we thank you for being here. I also want to thank the taxpayers for taking the time to be here and talk to us about it. We could have easily just said, "Oh, sorry, not my problem. That's the assessor." But I think it's very important, you reached out to us, you wanted us to hear you, and this was your forum, to speak, and we're very happy that you came and did that. And I thank the media for being here, because it is hard to get the message out to the citizens, and hopefully, this will help, and that... Lastly, you know, I'll take, our national association's motto is to build stronger counties. And to me, county government is the best form of government. It's closest to the people, and I think we've demonstrated that today. But, as we move forward, moving forward together, we can become stronger. And so, you have my commitment, you have this board's commitment, as you heard today, that we're going to do this together, so you're not alone. So, keep in touch with us. We'll keep in touch with you. We have lots of emails and lots of phone numbers now, but together, we can, we can try to make our system better for you. So, thank you all for being here today. Yeah, let's take a ten-minute break here, and do I have a motion for a ten-minute break?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Mr. Morgan, please. Okay, thank you.
Mary Ann? You should go see if they want to talk to you.
Yeah. Hey, Doug.
Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Kraft? Motion passes. Motion passes.
Motion to reconvene?
Some move.
Please vote.
Try to do it a little faster, Dan.
Got it. We are ready.
I know it's Ellen's fault.
Most of the time.
She's mad about her taxes, not sure.
In finishing the Board of Equalization, we have no need for executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn and go back into the Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Duda, please vote.
One moment, please. We are adjourning as the V O E and reconvening as the Board of Commissioners. All right. Commissioner Rogers. Countess, yes? All right.
We are now back into the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Mr. Duda, Mr. Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Rogers, Madam Chair.
We will move to item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 10th, 2017. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 24th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
I just asked if we separate those.
Is there, it's been asked that we vote on these separately. Is there a motion to approve item A?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve item B?
No move, second.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
One moment, please. Okay. Motion passes.
A through D. Is there a motion to approve the consent? Oh, I'm sorry, A through G. Sorry. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote on the consent.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Being not, oh, come on down. Next are the committees, the first being the Finance, the Budget Report as presented, unless the either chair wants to say anything about that item. Next is the, just to note, the Administrative Services will meet immediately after following this meeting.
Very briefly.
Child and Youth Committee is, there's one, a resolution to approve the second addendum, oh, this is being laid over till next week. The next is the Human Resources, the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented, Legislative Issues. We did talk about that L B 163 today, we will meet with Senator Vargas on that. We will then have during our Human Resources Committee, a more robust conversation about the legislation, and have that on next week's agenda as well. Yes.
I just wanted to note that this, this Friday at 9:00, the Nebraska Association of Counties Board will be meeting in Lincoln just to take positions on all the related state bills countywide, so I hope to have a report back next week.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Different topic, if I may, within legislation?
Yes.
Okay. The, the talk that this week, Senator Chambers shifting his view from Douglas County can't possibly get a sixth juvenile judge, to not only does Douglas County need a sixth judge, they need a seventh judge, which just really scares me. The sixth judge, we can accommodate, but it will be expensive. It will cost the Building Commission somewhere between $500,000 and $800,000 to transform more space on the sixth floor of the courthouse into yet another juvenile courtroom. But we've made plans, we can do it. There will be incremental increases for the county, as we have more staff now being displaced by the new courtroom, that we have to find space for them somewhere. Even if we can do this without increasing staffing, it's still going to increase the expenses, both for the county and the Building Commission. We'll do that, if that's what we need to do. The seventh judge would just be a killer. And, and maybe they're serious on this talk, maybe they're not, I don't know. I have nowhere in mind that we can go lease a courtroom, and, and I fear that that's what we would have to do short-term if they gave us a seventh juvenile judge. It will not fit up there. I, I had a chance meeting with Senator Burkhardt in a barber's chair over the weekend, and had a great discussion with him about that, and he is quite familiar with our courthouse, but hadn't really thought about the implications of a seventh juvenile judge. I don't know what stand we want to take regarding the sixth judge, but the seventh judge is the thing that just absolutely terrifies me. There is no way in the world that we could ever accommodate that without raising taxes. I mean, the expenses are going to go up so much, we're going to have to have another courthouse. I mean, I don't know of another way to avoid it. And maybe we need to be making long-term plans for that eventuality, but I don't even know how you make those plans without spending a lot of money. So, that's my concern. The sixth judge, we can handle, it will be expensive, it's going to make it that much harder to, you know, hold the line on, on spending this year. It will increase our expenses, but the seventh judge just is a killer. We just absolutely could not accommodate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I, I spoke to Commissioner Borgerson about this, and I know there's some plans back on the drawing board about moving to 42nd and Woolworth, which I really think we should do. I, I am really, I'll be very candid, I'm very disappointed, this old courthouse has been, been remodeled six, seven, eight, nine, 10 times, or whatever. It's unbelievable, the money we spent on tearing out stuff we put in, and, I mean, I was, as you know, in the election office back in the 70s, when it really was the first major remodeling that screwed it all up, took the stairs out and all that crap. So, it is, this, that building over there needs to be left alone. It's, we need to talk seriously and act like adults and move this court and do something else. We also need to, I think, free up space and do some other things to get out from under some of the leases. So, I think we need to do something pretty long-term, and Commissioner Kavanaugh is in charge of that committee, and we need to get on it and get something done. I frankly also think we ought to be closely aligned, is we ought to get the, the city of Omaha involved in some of these expenses. For example, you know, today we had all this assessor stuff down here. You know, we assess property for the city of Omaha, they don't pay us a dime. So, we probably need to figure out some way to make them a partner and help them, have us, have them pay for the services they're getting from the county assessor. Anyway, I, I think we're going to have to get out of the building, particularly since they put that courtroom up there, that's going to be, I think, pretty wild. So, that's my thought.
Commissioner Rogers?
To that point, you know, I, I know it's a, the Commissioner Duda's aspect is not to have to build a new courthouse, and the only way not to build a new courthouse is to move them out. Now, to Commissioner Boyle's point, there's been some discussion, probably two years ago, that there's some plans laid out to kind of make that happen, and there's some interested people. So, I think that, that talk probably can speed up now, now that the judges are reluctant to do it, but I think they're more supportive of having their burden leave, they don't want to leave the courthouse. But to that point, there's some options that were talked about a couple of years ago with Jerry, and if that's the case, we can start rolling them out and seeing what the options are. And I've had a couple of people approach me that are interested in some support. If the goodwill bond that we use has ran its way out, there's some options, there's some plans, so, thanks.
Commissioner Kraft?
You know, you bring up having the city of Omaha help with this. Perhaps in TIF financing, they could share a little bit of that TIF with us to do the job, because they're taking taxes away from us by granting TIFs.
The trouble with TIF is that the money doesn't go to the city, it goes to the developer. So, when a TIF is granted, they freeze the value at $100,000, then they build a $75 million building, and then they tax it $75 million, and the developer gets the money, nobody else does, not the city, not the schools, not the county.
Over 15 here.
Yeah. The city of Valley now has 12% of their property wrapped up in TIFs. So, and I've asked Joe, and I've gotten figures from him, it's amazing what this is costing us in revenue. So, that's a whole nother story of getting, us getting the wrong end of the stick.
Commissioner Rogers? Oh, leftover. All right, Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. Now that Commissioner Boyle's on the Building Commission, we actually had quite a good chat after the last meeting about some possibilities. I recognize, we ought to have some, we need to be working on some long-term plans, but they're going to be expensive. I mean, if they give us another judge next month, we can't go to them and say, "Well, eventually, we're going to build a new courthouse, so we're just going to wait on this new judge until we build a new courthouse." We got to have something in place quicker than that. I'm all for long-term plans and planning. I think it's going to be expensive, because I don't know how you make those plans without going out and either building or buying another building, and that will increase our costs. We need to be exploring that and ready for whatever they do. But we can't just give empty rhetoric that, "Well, eventually, we'll build a new courthouse, so, no problem." We have to be ready here and now for whatever the legislature hands us.
Can I ask you, doesn't the Building Commission have the right of eminent domain?
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Well, Commissioner Boyle mentioned the city. That would take legislative action in order to accomplish that, and if you're going to do that, you just will get the schools involved too. But that would be quite a hill to climb, but.
It would be.
I know you've done more miracles, so we'll watch that one, and we'll help.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yeah, and I recall reading a study from, oh, maybe two decades ago, where they wanted to build in the Long-Term Strategic Plan, a courthouse at where the Greyhound bus depot is. I don't recall how long ago that was, but this has been in discussion and thought process for so long. Was that 20 years ago?
Well, close to it.
Close to 20 years ago. And nothing's happened, and we haven't gotten there. We shouldn't wait another 20 years.
I, for one, am not support, supportive of adding any judges at this point. I mean, we're right in the middle of juvenile justice reform mandated at some degree by the state, so we keep our children out of the system. I understand there's a backlog according to caseloads. I think we, we should pursue the, the moving of the juvenile justice, or forming a juvenile justice center at 42nd and Woolworth. And there have been alternatives that Commissioner Boyle and I are going to go down and talk to Senator Chambers about, that have been brought forth by citizens, and some that are, some will say, "Oh, my gosh," but Amnesty Day is one. You could get rid of a lot of cases if you do a yearly Amnesty Day, and the state could say, "These are the cases that are going to be able to do that Amnesty Day." You could use alternative, there's never been any discussion about changing state law, so that county court could do some juvenile casework. Nor has there been serious conversation, when I brought up about bringing back a retired judge to do night or weekend court. I got a whole lot of chewing on for bringing it up, but, again, they're all alternatives other than what we constantly face every single year, and that is just add another one, add another one, add another one. So, I think that we seriously have to have those conversations, and when some of those occur, obviously, we'll bring that back and have the conversation, in hopes that this doesn't happen overnight. But, again, they may be off the wall, but some are very easily, I think, able to, are ea, some of these ideas are easy to do if we just think outside the box a little bit. So, with that, again, at the H R Committee meeting, we'll go through our legislation in a little bit more detail. We'll bring back some stuff next week, as well as Commissioner Rogers bringing back what Naco did. And again, this is ongoing, fluent conversations with legislation. We do have need for executive session for union negotiations.
And litigation.
And litigation. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? And again, just to note, following executive session, which will probably take about 30 minutes, no? No? 15 minutes? 15 minutes?
Could be as long as, could be, could be, I wouldn't say any longer than 15, 20 minutes.
We'll vote. We'll shoot for that, and then we'll start the administrative at 1:30, so people can get lunch, is that what you want? Or do you want to go right into it? Grab your lunch and run up to 9:03?
About 1:30.
We'll do administrative services, and following that is H R, and then we'll be done with committees for the day. Motion to go into executive session for union negotiations and litigation. Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, motion passes. Motion passes.
Okay.
Motion passes.